Today, let us all please rise and place ourselves in the presence of God. Lord God Almighty, thank you for this auspicious day. Thank you for gathering us once more in this whole aptly called people's center. It is raining, and we are thankful. We offer, however, this prayer for your people, who are wary and concerned that the rains will cause them pain and suffering. We pray that you ease their burden. We pray for each one present today. Ease each one's worry, whatever they may be. We pray for our leaders, so they may be guided by your wisdom and will. We pray for our resource persons, that they find in their hearts and minds the sanctity of their oath that they professed in this public hearing, to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth. Above all, we pray for our country and your people. May we all find peace in this land and peace within our hearts and minds. All this we pray in your name. Amen.
Amen. In the name of Father, Son, and Holy Spirit. Amen. Please remain standing for the singing of the national anthem. The next agenda for today's committee hearing is the roll call of the members present in these proceedings.
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Congressman Nakob.
May I respectfully move that we dispense with the calling of the roll. So move, Mr. Chair.
There is a motion.
Second motion.
To dispense with the calling of the roll, duly seconded. Are there any objections? Hearing none. The motion is approved. Next in the agenda is the approval of the minutes of the meeting held last August 28, 2024. Is there any motion?
Mr. Chair.
Congressman Nakob.
May I respectfully move that we dispense with the reading of the minutes of the last hearing and consider it as approved. So move, Mr. Chair.
There is a motion to dispense with the reading of the minutes of the meeting held last August 28, 2024, and for the approval of the same, duly seconded. Are there any objections? Hearing none. The motion is carried. Before we proceed with the committee hearing proper, please allow the chair to deliver his opening remarks. Magandang umaga po sa ating lahat. Good morning to our senior deputy speaker Dong Gonzalez, the head of the Task Force Quadcom, the honorable co-chairman of the four standing committees, esteemed colleagues, distinguished guests, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you for being here today as we continue this crucial and profoundly significant investigation. Our focus remains on unraveling the web of extrajudicial killings, the collusion between a well-organized syndicate and government officials in the drug trade, and the criminal activities linked to POGOs. In our previous hearings, serious allegations came to light. Witnesses claimed that former president Rodrigo Rova Duterte was directly involved in the execution of Chinese drug personalities while they were detained in Davao. According to these testimonies, these executions were allegedly carried out in exchange for money and promises of release from imprisonment. Such accusations, if proven true, reveal a systematic abuse of power and a deliberate elimination of individuals for financial gain, all under the pretext of maintaining public order. Additionally, witness Mr. Jimmy Guban provided further incriminating information, detailing drug shipments that were allegedly facilitated by government officials with close ties to Mr. Michael Young, a figure widely suspected of being a key player in the drug trade. Our investigation has also scrutinized the suspicious accumulation of wealth by certain individuals seemingly tied to the illegal operations of POGOs. Evidence suggests that the Chinese crime syndicates have employed Filipino dummies to establish shell corporations designed to conceal profits generated from illegal activities. This elaborate scheme not only undermines our financial systems, but also poses a serious threat to national security by enabling large-scale money laundering and other criminal enterprises within our borders. Today's session will continue to peel back the layers of this criminal network as we piece together the connections between these individuals, organizations, and public officials involved. Our goal is to uncover the full extent of these operations, expose those responsible, and hold them accountable. We are committed to fulfilling our duty to the Filipino people by seeking justice and preserving the integrity of our government institutions. Again, magandang umaga po sa ating lahat, sa ating mga kasamahan sa mababang kapulungan, sa ating former president Gloria Macapagal Arroyo, our senior deputy speaker Dong Gonzalez, and to all our resource persons, magandang umaga and maraming salamat. We now recognize the chair of the Committee on Public Order and Safety, Congressman Don Fernandez. You are recognized.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair. To my co-chairs, our esteemed colleagues, former president Gloria Macapagal Arroyo, senior deputy speaker Dong Gonzalez. Kunsaan, nagsimula ang lahat ng ito through his resolution. Resource persons and guests, magandang umaga po sa ating lahat. By now, there can be no doubt in anyone's mind that powerful people are behind this large-scale, multi-billion peso criminal enterprise involving drug trafficking, POGOs, and extrajudicial killings. The fact that several key personalities of Pogo corporations have managed to evade the long arm of the law speaks volumes of the power they wield and the resources at their disposal. Our findings have firmly established that Chinese nationals obtained Filipino citizenship by fraudulent means, then proceeded to acquire vast land holdings through businesses disguised as Filipino-owned corporations. In the course of our inquiry, I believe that one thing will eventually be made clear: that drug money is the source of Pogo money, and that Pogo money is a source of criminal activities, including EJKs. Sa araw na ito, nais kumbigandiin ang tatlong punto ukol sa ating investigasyon sa mga ilegal na Pogo. Una, ang importansya ng testimonya ni Cassandra Leong at iba pang mga resource persons na maaring makapagbigay ng impormasyon ukol sa mga makapangyarihang tao na nasa likod ng operasyon ng ilegal na Pogo. Nitong nakaraang hearing, ay nakita natin na nagdadalawang isip si Cassandra Leong na ibahagi ang totoong ginagampalan niya bilang authorized representative ng Lucky South 99. Hindi rin siya handa upang pangalanan ang mga boss o pinanser ng may ilegal Pogo operations. Tinanggian niya ang pagkakatoon na ibinigay ng Quadcom na magkaroon ng isang executive session. Sa umpisa, ay pumayag siya na mag-execute ng bank waiver. Ngunit totoo ay kaniyang binawi dahil sa alang-alang niya na ito ay magsisilbing ebidensya laban sa kanya sa kasong money laundering na inehain ang paok at amlak. Being the beneficial owner of 58% of the shares of Whirlwind Corporation and the trusted translator of Whirlwind director, Duan Ren Wu, it stands to reason that she has the sufficient knowledge about the affairs of the two companies. As per the testimony of Lucky South 99 Incorporated's Ronalin Baterna and Stephanie Mascarenas, we have seen that Chinese nationals have assigned them as officers of the Pogo corporations and even made it appear that they have invested millions as paid-up capital in order to give semblance of the Filipino ownership of the Pogo corporations. Ang ikalawang punto ay ang paglaganap ng mga ilegal na Pogo sa ating bansa. Noong August 31, 2024, nagkaroon ng raid sa ilegal Pogo Hub sa Lapu-Lapu City, Cebu. Ang Pogo neto ay nag-ooperate ng romance at cryptocurrency scams sa loob ng Tourist Garden Hotel sa barangay Agus. Mula sa porasyong ito, ay may nahuling mga 160-plus na Indonesians, Chinese, at Burmese nationals. Sinasabi ng paok na ang mga boss sa operasyon na ito ay maaring nanggaling sa Pogo Hub sa Porac Pampanga na nakatakas noong raid sa Lucky South 99 kailan lamang. Sa pangyayaring ito, ating makikita na mataas ang posibilidad ng paglaganap ng mga ilegal na Pogo sa kabila ng ban na inutos ng ating pangulo. Ang mga Pogo operators ay nakapaglabas na ng bilyong-bilyong piso para sa pagtakbo ng kanilang negosyo sa ating bansa. Nakita natin na gagawin nila ang lahat, legal man o ilegal, upang mabawi ang kanilang inilabas na pondo. Well-funded sila, at nakita natin na kayang-kaya nilang lusutan ang ating mga otoridad. Ikatlong punto ay ang koneksyon ng Pogo sa makapangyarihang tao tulad ni Hong Jang Yang. Si Hong Jang Yang ay kapatid ni Michael Yang na naging presidential economic advisor ng dating pangulong Duterte. Si Hong Jang Yang ay may kaugnayan kay Alice Go o Gong Waping at Yu Sheng Kan ng Pogo operator ng Hongsheng Gaming Technology. May kaugnayan din siya sa isang nagnangalang Gerald T. Cruz ng Brick Hearts Technology, isang Pogo service provider. These links alone do not mean that they are involved in illegal activities, and that is the reason why, at the proper time, I shall seek a motion to invite several key personalities to the succeeding hearings, and it will be up to them whether to use the opportunity to air their side of the issue. And finally, ang kakulangan ng mga kasalukuyang batas na pinaiiral ng ating pamahalaan ay kailangan ng masusugan sa lalong madaling panahon, upang sa ganon ay maiwasan na ang mga pangyayaring sinasamantala ng mga mapangabuso nating mamamayan, nasa gobyerno man o wala, Filipino man o banyaga. Hindi natin maisasantabi ang mga pangyayaring naganak. Sa nakaraang administrasyon, ay patuloy nating nararamdaman sa kasalukuyang panahon. Akusahan man tayo na ang lahat ng ating ginagawa sa mga komiting ito, mula noon hanggang ngayon, at pag-iimbestiga ng iba't ibang personalidad na natutukoy ng ebidensya at pangyayari ay may bahid politika. Be that as it may, this quad committee will not stop. We will not even blink. We will not be affected. The resolve as mandated to us to achieve is far from over. As evidences continue to flow and being verified together by all of us in such a way transparency and honesty are always being observed. Dangerous as it might be, we, as a public official, mandated by the constitution to uphold the law at all times, must face the outcome and consequences of this investigation. Pagbantaan niyo man kami, siraan man kaming lahat mula ulo hanggang pa. Gumamit man ng mga tao upang mabago ang takbo at kalalabasan ng investigasyon. Isa lamang ang nagsusimigaw na katotohanan. Kailan man, ang ebidensya ay hindi magsisinungaling. Tamaan na ang tamaan, masaktan na masaktan. We will continue on this investigation and collate all the pieces of evidences, linking different elements together with corroborating statements from resource persons to come out with a law that will give way to a better place to live for you and for me and for the future generation. Minsan lang tayong dadaan sa mundong ito, at sa ating pagdaan, gawin na natin ang tama. Dahil sa tama, kailan man, we will never go wrong. Marami salamat po, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Congressman Don Fernandez. The next to deliver his opening remarks is our co-chair, Congressman Joseph Stephen Caraps Padwano. You're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For the interest of time, Mr. Chairman, I'd rather submit my opening remarks to the Comsec for record purposes. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
That's noted. Comsec, please take note of that. The next to deliver his opening remarks is another co-chair, the chairman of the Committee on Human Rights, Congressman Benny Abante. You're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Kala ko si Congressman Don lang ang magibigay ng opening remarks. Any rate, to my fellow co-chairs and colleagues in the Quad Committee, our resource persons and guests. Ang mga colleagues ko po dito, pinabati ko rin pong ating former president, GMA. Magandang umaga po sa inyo lahat. In the Book of Proverbs, chapter 6, verse 27 and 28, we are asked, "Can a man take fire in his bosom and his clothes not be burned? Can one go upon hot coals and his feet not be burned?" In our last three hearings, we have answered this question. A testimony we have heard clearly illustrate the interconnectedness of wrongdoing, domino effects of sins, of how evil begets evil. Kaya akma po na ang magiging focus ng ating hearing ngayon ay Pogo. Dahil dati, maraming nagsabi na hindi naman ito nakakasama. The gamblers are not Filipinos. Hindi maoko abayan natin ano ko korap. But as we have discovered, this is simply not true. We have learned that the impact of gambling does not stop with the individual gambler. The money earned from POGOs, we have learned, supports and leads to other forms of wrongdoing: fraud, prostitution, money laundering, corruption, even torture and kidnapping. Hindi lamang yan. May testigo tayo. Si Lieutenant Colonel Jovi Espinido, who informed us that drug money was used to fund the quota system in the previous administration's war on drugs that resulted in thousands of deaths. Blinded by profit, for the love of money is the root of all evil, those who were expected to uphold human rights ignored due process and committed injustices in the name of justice. After all, that we have learned this quad committee, can anyone now say with a straight face that gambling is a harmless vice? Sanapo, in the course of our hearings, we can all finally open our eyes to the fact that the evil of gambling extends far beyond personal sin. It is a societal evil, one that can corrupt our country and destroy lives. This interconnectedness of sin is why it is crucial for us to push forward in our hearings. We must recognize that even small acts of wrongdoing can have far-reaching consequences. Sin begets sin, just as a single stone dropped into a pond creates ripos that spread far and wide. We cannot fool ourselves into thinking that these small illicit actions do not matter. My friends, we must recognize that we can only counter the seeds of sin by sowing the seeds of righteousness. I urge all our participants, all our resource persons, choose honesty over deceit, right over wrong, life over death, by doing so, so we not only keep our nation from falling into the trap of sin, but we also create a ripple effect of goodness that can contribute to building the bagong Pilipinas we all aspire for. Let the acts fall where it should fall. Pagpapatuloy po namin itong hearing namin hangga't matapos po ito, at tayo makagawa ng magandang batas upang once and for all iintuna ang mga kalokohan dito sa ating bayan. Magandang umaga po sa inyo lahat.
Thank you, Bishop Congressman Benny Abante. So before we proceed with the hearing proper, may we ask the committee secretary to please acknowledge our resource person for today's committee hearing. Comsec?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. In today's hearing, we have with us from the Anti-Money Laundering Council, we have attorney Adrian Arpon and attorney Emmet Manantan. From the Bureau of Immigration, we have attorney Homer Areliano, the head of the Prosecution and Legal Assistance Section, and attorney Ong Kad. From the Bureau of Internal Revenue, we have attorney Seventan Orculia. From the Bureau of Corrections, we have with us Superintendent Gerardo Padilla. From the Department of Foreign Affairs, we have Michelle La Biones and Mr. Amer Tago. From the Department of Interior and Local Government, we have Usec Juan Victor Yamas. From the Land Registration Authority, we have attorney Salviante Thaddeus Elisaldi, the acting director of Legal Service. From the National Bureau of Investigation, we have attorney Agrefina de la Cruz, attorney Rose Jonathan Galicia, and attorney Yentel Malikad. From the Office of the Solicitor General, we have Ms. Sheila Marie Sulit Andaya. From the Philippine Amusement and Gaming Corporation, we have Brigadier General Raoul Villanueva and Ms. Laarni Orbeta. From the Presidential Anti-Organized Crime Commission, I am not sure if they are around. Please present yourselves. From the Bureau of Customs, we have attorney Willy Sarmiento. From the Philippine Drug Enforcement Agency, we have with us the Director General, DG Moro Vergilio Lazo. From the Philippine Statistics Authority, we have engineer Mariza Grande, the Assistant National Statistician. From the Securities and Exchange Commission, we have attorney Hallie Oliver Labayo. From the Philippine National Police, we have Police Brigadier General Jose Hidalgo and also Police Colonel Jay Di Maandal. From the local government units, we have with us Mayor Carmelo Lazatin. From Porac Pampanga, also represented by engineer Mayla Agasan and Mr. Glenn Lansangan. And from the Hongsheng Gaming Technology, we have Mr. Dennis Konanan. From Lucky South 99, Ms. Ronalin Baterna and Norman Macapagal. Also with us from Lucky South 99 Outsourcing, its president Julian M. Linsangan, Edwin Seang, and Marlon Ryan Chua. From Lucky South 99 Limited, yes, also Mr. Dennis Konanan and Norman Macapagal. And other invitees, we have with us Mr. Alberto Rodolfo de la Serna, Mrs. Nellati Cruz de Guzman. From the DOJ, you have attorney Wesley Young. And... That's all. Also, Ms. Cassandra Ong is still under contempt and in our detention facility. Thank you, Mr. Chair, your honors.
Thank you, Comsec. Before we proceed again to the committee hearing proper, allow the chair first to dispose of some admin matters that we have at the moment. So may we ask the co-chair Congressman Padwano to please discuss all our admin matters that we wish to take up this morning.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, during the third hearing, attorney Harry Roque, under oath, committed to this committee that he will submit all those documents that being requested by this honorable committee. First, Mr. Chairman, he was required to submit medical hospital records and proof of two surgeries performed on Ms. Mayla Roque. But I have here right now the letter of Ms. Mayla Roque requesting for her use in today's hearing. Isa lang pong surgery ang nangyari sa kanya last year. So until now, Mr. Harry Roque has not yet submitted this document. Second, Mr. Chairman, the deed of sale and BIR transfer payments of the 1.8 hectares of land in multinational values paranyake. Third, all documents submitted in Securities and Exchange Commission regarding the transfer of shares to attorney Percival Ortega. Fourth, extrajudicial settlement of estate to the unnamed aunt, including corresponding BIR tax returns. Fifth, the statement of asset and debilities of Mr. Harry Roque from 2016 to 2022. Sixth, income tax return of Jang Cham Holdings and Trading Incorporated for calendar years 2014 to 2022. Sixth, Mr. Harry Roque and his wife's income tax return for calendar years 2014 to 2022. And seventh, beneficial ownership of transparency from WOTD or similar documents showing true and beneficial ownership submitted to the SEC concerning Jang Cham Holdings and Trading Incorporated. Seventh, judicial affidavit executed by Ms. Ronalin Baterna and judicial affidavit executed by Catherine Cassandra Elong. All these documents being requested are directed for Harry Roque. Mr. Harry Roque has submitted this committee until I have received, Mr. Chairman, and we have received a letter from him for a motion to quash, and maybe that will be discussed on the later part of this hearing, Mr. Chairman. So all the documents which was committed by Mr. Harry Roque was not submitted to this committee for the record, Mr. Chairman. Now to this SEC, they're required to submit beneficial ownership and transparency form or similar documents showing true and beneficial ownership submitted to the SEC concerning Jang Cham Holdings and Trading Incorporated. Nandito po. Nasubmit po beneficial ownership for 2021 and 2022. For SSS, list of SSS members and dates of membership, coverage of employees of Hongsheng Gaming Technology, Jang Cham Holdings and Trading Corporation, Sunyu One Technology, Baofu, Lucky South 999, Lucky South 999 Outsourcing, Lucky South 999 Limited Corporation, and Whirlwind Corporation. This was requested by Congressman De Go. Comsec, have they submitted all those documents being required from SSS?
Mr. Chair, we have not yet received such documents.
With that, Mr. Chairman, I move to issue a show cause order for the SSS. So move, Mr. Chairman.
There is a motion to issue a show cause order to SSS? Duly seconded. Hearing no objection. The motion is carried.
For the BID, Mr. Chairman, personal details of Pogo IGL workers whose working visas were canceled. BID, have you submitted that?
Good morning, Mr. Chair. Yes, Mr. Chair, those were previously submitted.
Thank you. Now let's proceed with the AFAB. AFAB was ordered to submit the feasibility studies relative to business venture in Bataan submitted by Ata. relative to business venture in Bataan submitted by Attorney Harry Roque. AFAB, Comsec, have they submitted?
We have not yet received such documents.
Is AFAB present? Voila, Mister Chairman, I move to issue a show cause order for AFAB to submit these feasibility studies relative to the business venture in Bataan by the company of Mister Harry Roque. So move Mister Chairman.
There is a motion to issue a show cause order to AFAB. Julie seconded, any objections? No objections, motion is carried.
Next is for the PNP to submit documents mentioned by Police Lieutenant Colonel Espinido in his affidavits as the list of police generals and other PNP officials who received money from Kirwin Espinoza's group as indicated in the ledger and copies of clear checks that were recovered from their account. Mister Chairman, is the PNP... Comsec? Comsec, has the PNP submitted?
Not yet sir.
Is there any representative from the PNP? From the PNP?
We have a representative sir.
Before we dispose with that matter Mister Chairman, let me move to the next matter. The last, for Napolcom Commissioner Edilberto Leonardo, is he present? Police retired Colonel and now Napolcom Commissioner Leonardo, is he present? Last three years' copy of salend?
Mister Chairman, last hearing Colonel Leonardo was present.
Yeah but he... Comsec, did he submit the documents being required from him?
Not yet sir.
Mister Chairman, I move to issue a show cause for Napolcom Commissioner Edilberto Leonardo for his salend for the last three years. So move Mister Chairman.
There is a motion to issue a show cause order for Colonel Edilberto Leonardo and submit documents required by the committee. Julie seconded, hearing no objection, the motion is carried.
Same as through with Police Major General Rume Karamat, he was required to submit his salends for the last three years. Is General Karamat present?
Sir, he sent an excuse letter, but the document has not yet been submitted.
Again Mister Chairman, I move to issue a show cause order for Major General Rume Karamat with regards to his salend for the past three years. So move Mister Chairman.
If I may Congressman Karamat... Congressman Paduano, there's an emergency in the family of General Karamat. So we'll give him that time to be able to comply with the requirements of the Quadcom.
I yield to the ruling of the Chair. Allow me to proceed Mister Chairman. For Mister Julian Linsangan, Lucky South 999 Outsourcing, you are ordered to submit a copy of the deed of sale of 2,500 square meter property of Puting Kahoy amounting to 16.7 million at 7,000 pesos per square meter. Nasubmit na to Comsec? Is Mister Linsangan present? Mister Linsangan, oh did you submit and comply? You submitted na? When? Please approach the mic.
Good morning Mister Chair. Yes Your Honor, today nasubmit na po.
Just today?
Yes Your Honor.
Comsec, do you confirm? Kindly check, okay thank you po.
Thank you Your Honor.
Next Mister Chairman, to the AMLOC, copy of initial report investigation on Whirlwind Corporation and Lucky South 999. AMLOC. Please.
Good morning Mister Chair. We have it with us Your Honor, but can we manifest that we presented to you in an executive session sir?
Chairman, the AMLOC is a copy of those documents being required to them by this committee and they are requesting for an executive session. Will be granted?
Does the information you wish to share with the committee has a national security implication, Attorney?
Mister Chair, we are in the process of finalizing the filing of our...
Okay, we will evaluate your request and please stand by so we can... the committee can decide on the request from your office.
Thank you Mister Chair.
Please proceed.
Mister Chairman, next is the DOJ status of DOJ investigation and update of cases against personalities of Lucky South 999 and Whirlwind. DOJ is present? DOJ? DOJ and BI?
And BI is present? DOJ, any representing from DOJ?
From the FBI sir.
Anyway, Mister Chairman, to dispose at sa requirements, pwede naman po mamaya dun sa Pogo, pwede natin tanungin sila on the updates of the case. So, okay lang po, just... Okay, just wait for the time. Now next is for the PAGCOR, list of approved license as well as unlicensed Pogo nationwide. PAGCOR?
Good morning sir. The document sir, it's on its way sir because we're just awaiting for the signature of the Chairman of the transmitted letters.
When was that? Will be submitted and distributed today?
Yes sir.
Today?
Yes sir.
Okay, thank you. Now to the Bureau of Immigration, yung copy po, yung... I was the one who requested the copy of the official document from Indonesia containing the reasons of deportation with regards to Catherine Cassandra Leong and Miss Yelago.
We submitted it this morning, Your Honor.
Thank you. To the DFA, copy of official document from Indonesia containing the reasons, the same, DFA. DFA is present? DFA please? Submitted na? Okay DFA, you have submitted na? This document, thank you. Parabili sa po natin. Then, all the five documents being requested was addressed to Comsec. Number one, to secure a copy of the death certificate of Mayor Navarro of Clarín, Miss Ames Occidental, I was informed by Comsec that they have already sent a letter request for this matter. And then to secure official report on PIS Roberto Quinto, on the death of Roberto Quinto, we have a copy now?
Yes Mister Chairman, I have here a copy from the Bureau of Corrections pertaining to the report on the death of PIS Robert Quinto. And the report on the Chinese nationals charged with illegal drugs who died from July 2016 to 2017.
Yes Mister Chairman. So let me proceed Mister Chairman. Kontinu lang to with regards to the excuse letter made by Mister Harry Roque last hearing with in relation to the engagement abroad. Comsec?
As of now sir, we have searched the internet for the address, but unfortunately there is no email, only its website. We have contacted them, but no reply so far.
Please follow up lang po.
Yes sir.
Next is for Mister De la Serna, records of enrollment in Omni Aviation School. Nandyan na po?
Yes sir.
Paki, ingi ako copya. Okay, then... For the AMLOC, status of our request, yung asset preservation order. Can you... Okay, can you... Can you praise the committee na lang dun sa executive session? We got that. Saman na po natin. That's all Mister Chairman, thank you.
Thank you Congressman Paduano. In addition to the list of admin matters mentioned by Congressman Paduano, there are more admin matters received by the committee. The committee received a letter from Superintendent Gerardo F. Padilla requesting for transfer of his detention from Bikutan and requesting the committee to grant him an executive session on a very important information he wished to reveal. We are also in receipt of a letter from Cassandra Leong, Catherine Cassandra Leong, explaining to the committee why she has not signed the waiver she promised during an open hearing. And in her letter, she stated the reason was because there was already a money laundering case filed by the National Bureau of Investigation. Therefore, the waiver does not apply anymore because we can have access on her financial records and bank transactions pursuant to the anti-money laundering act. Another letter, the committee received...
In relation to Cassandra also, she's being invited on September 5 by Senate.
Okay, there's also a letter coming from Attorney Andre B. Mortel from the Senate Committee on Justice and Human Rights requesting Miss Cassandra Ong to be present on September 5, 2024 at 1:00 PM to be part of their panel on the investigation that they are conducting at the moment. So last is the letter from... excuse letter from Attorney Maria Gracia Dioco. Excuse letter stating the reason that she has a hearing to attend to in Mabalakat City, Pampanga, at 9 o'clock this morning.
Mister Chairman, for the information of the members, they mentioned the name Attorney Dioco is the attorney that authorized the sublease agreement between Whirlwind and Lucky South 999.
Mister Chair? Yes Congressman Flores? Mister Chair, as far as the letter of Superintendent Padilla requesting for the executive session Mister Chair, inasmuch as we want to keep this public and transparent and if it appears that his testimony is not going to affect national security or is contrary to public morals or decency, Mister Chair, then I don't think that we should allow an executive session in that matter Mister Chair. While I agree with the position of Congressman Keith Flores on the issue of the request by Superintendent Padilla, may I request, Your Honor, that we take it up later after we complete the discussion on other matters related to our topic for today. And we will hold in abeyance for the meantime the decision of the committee on the statement made by Congressman Flores. Very well Mister Chair. Thank you.
Mister Chair?
Congressman Abante?
While you said that we are holding in abeyance the request of Superintendent Padilla, I would like to register my objection to the executive session agreeing with Congressman Flores about this. Thank you Mister Chair.
May I likewise request Congressman Abante, the Court Chair and the Chair of the Committee on Human Rights to... If I may request Congressman Abante to defer for the meantime decision of the Chair and the committee on the position you stated together with Congressman Flores?
Yes Mister Chair. But also, I also would like to mention the request, the letter of Catherine Cassandra Ong, which I also object Mister Chair.
So... Okay, that...
The fact that she is not even present today, she ought to be present not only to write a letter to us, but she should be present and tell it to us directly.
Okay, Comsec, can we ask Cassandra Leong to be present in this committee hearing? We will...
Mister Chairman? Mister Chairman?
With indulgence of Congressman Abante, yes Congressman Fernandez?
I think we have an agenda to follow and in accordance with our agenda, we will be tackling first the issue of Superintendent Padilla. And thereafter, we will be discussing about the Pogo issue. And thereafter, again, the issue of Cassandra Leong will be discussed further. So I think the right timing for the motion of Chairman Abante will be on the third part of our agenda, Mister Chairman.
Thank you Congressman Fernandez.
Mister Chair, can I ask for a one-minute suspension please?
One minute suspended. Hearing is resumed. Congressman Abante, as you were saying earlier, may I ask the honorable Court Chair to please repeat what you have stated earlier?
Yes Mister Chair.
May I ask you to please repeat what you have stated earlier before we...
There are two objections that I made Mister Chair and it is up to the Chairman of the committee if he would like all this in abeyance. But I object agreeing with Congressman Flores about the request of Superintendent Padilla for an executive session. And then secondly, I also object the request of Cassandra Ong. Mister Chair, as far as not taking the oath to wait for the accounts, the fact that she is not even present today, is she here? Alright, so perhaps Mister Chair, upon your indulgence, you could be able to talk about it later on.
So, thank you Congressman Abante. May I request Congressman Abante that we discuss and deliberate on the statement made by Congressman Keith Flores and Chair Benny Abante on the issue of whether the committee will grant the request of Superintendent Padilla in a later time today. So we will hold in abeyance the discussion on that particular issue for the moment.
I accede Mister Chairman.
Thank you. Now we proceed, yes Congressman Paduano?
Mister Chairman, before we proceed with the with the interpolation to the resource persons, let me just state that we have not yet disposed on the supena issued to Mister Harry Roque with regards to the documents. But as I've said, unfortunately, we have not sent the supena to Mister Harry Roque and all those documents that he has committed during the third hearing because of the weather condition Mister Chairman. But Mister Chairman, we have to dispose on that, what will be the position of the committee with regards to the invitation for his wife to be present na nakakabit po dun sa mga dokumentong nire-request na committing ito. Thank you Mister Chairman. And that's the status of this hearing Mister Chairman. We have still the admin matters. Thank you Mister Chairman.
Okay, thank you Congressman Paduano. May I likewise request Congressman Paduano to allow Attorney Harry Roque more time because he is invited in our hearing today and he has to appear. He has committed to the committee that he will appear before us today and submit all the documents that he has openly stated during the last hearing. However, we are in receipt of a motion to quash from Attorney Harry Roque and before we discuss this and deliberate on this motion to quash, perhaps we can give him more time so he can come and he can be present while we deliberate on this particular subject, Your Honor. Is that alright?
I yield to the position of the Chair, thank you Mister Chairman.
Salamat Congressman Paduano. Then Congressman Fernandez?
In relation to the invitation that we have sent to Mayra Loque Roque, the wife of Harry Roque, what is the status of this invitation Mister Chair?
We are in receipt of a excuse letter from Miss... We are in receipt of a excuse letter from Ms. Myra Roque and with attachments from medical practitioners saying that she has undergone several tests. And again, I'd like to request the honorable co-chair if we can deliberate on this when Attorney Harry Roque has already arrived in this committee hearing, your honor.
Okay, so we will be discussing when he arrive?
Yes.
Can we ask the Comsec if he already communicated with the Comsec regarding with his presence today?
Yes, sir.
Is he going to come?
There is no confirmation, sir.
There is no confirmation?
Yes.
So, your honor, if he will not appear today as he committed in the last hearing that we had, then perhaps another motion is appropriate and we will discuss that later this afternoon before this committee hearing adjourns.
Okay, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you Congressman Fernandez. At this point, before we proceed- Yes, we will allow Ms. Cassandra Lee Ong to be present in the committee hearing on September 5 at the Senate. Okay, before we proceed further, there is a point of order that is being raised by our former president Gloria Macapagal Arroyo. Ma'am, you are recognized.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman and honorable chairman. Our proceedings are adopting formal rules of public hearings, including subpoenas on statements, contempt decisions, detention, decisions of executive session, etc. So I would like to give a gentle reminder that in such formal proceedings, hearsay does not deserve the same credence compared to personal knowledge evidence. That's my point of order, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, ma'am. The observation of the former president is duly noted by the committee and we will deliberate on that at the appropriate time. Thank you, ma'am. So the next part of the agenda is the- Let us proceed first with the ground rules that will be stated by our vice chair Congressman Romeo Acop. Congressman Acop, you are recognized.
Mr. Chair, before we proceed to that, my request that we acknowledge the members of the four committees present today. We haven't done that yet.
Okay, Comsec, you are directed to recognize all the members present in this joint, the fourth joint public hearing of the QuadCom. Comsec.
Mr. Chair.
Congressman Acop.
While waiting for the list of members of the four committees present in this morning's hearing, may be given the opportunity to remind the members and the resource persons present of our approved rule on interpolation. And I would just like to quote the rule. During the period of interpolation, resource persons shall be given five minutes each to state their position or make a presentation at the meeting. Resource persons shall not be allowed to speak or make interjections until they are recognized by the lead chairperson or the presiding officer. Committee members and other house members shall be recognized by the lead chairperson to make statements or ask questions to the resource persons. No member shall speak unless recognized by the lead chairperson or the presiding officer. Members shall be given 10 minutes each for their interpolation, excluding the answers of the resource persons. No member except the lead person or the presiding officer shall be allowed to make interjections during the course of the interpolation of a member of the four committees. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you Congressman Acop. Comsec, can you please recognize the members, the honorable members present in our committee hearing today?
Mr. Chair.
Congressman Abante.
While our Comsec is trying to get all of the- Are you ready? Okay.
Comsec, please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, your honors. We have with us in this public hearing today, of course, our chairpersons Representative Robert A. Barberz, Representative Danes Fernandez, Representative Joseph Stefan Padwano, Representative Binvenedo Abante Jr., Representative Aurelio Dong Gonzalez, our senior deputy speaker, Representative Romeo Acop, Representative Deputy Speaker David J.J. Suarez, Representative Zia Alonto Ajong, Representative Jonathan Keith Flores, Representative Johnny Pimentel, Representative Gervil Jinkebitrix Luistro, Representative Wilter Palma, Representative Jose Arthur Garcia Jr., Representative Jane Castro, Representative Sergio Dagooch, Representative Maximo Dalug Jr., Representative Francisco Paulo Ortega V., Representative Gloria Macapagal Arroyo, Representative Dean Asistio, Representative Julian Jam Baronda, Representative Christine Singson Mihan, Representative Arnie Fuenti Belia, Representative Reinante Arrogancia, Representative Emerson Pasqual, Representative Ron Salo, Representative Teodrico Jaresco Jr., Representative Jefferson Conghun, Representative Faustino Michael Carlos D. III, Representative Francisco Jose Matugas, Representative Ramon Rodrigo Gutierrez, Representative Bonifacio Bosita, Representative Ricardo Cruz Jr., Representative Lordan Suon, Representative Ching Bernos, Representative Roberto Puno, Representative Salvador Plito, Representative Isabel Maria Zamora, Representative Amparo Maria Zamora, Representative Janet Garin, Representative Jose Aquino, Representative Ambrosio Cruz, Representative Alfred de los Santos. That's all, Mr. Chair, your honors. Thank you.
Thank you, Comsec. Now we proceed with the interpolations. We have a list of interpolators who have signified their intent to ask questions. May I have the list, Comsec, of all the interpolators so we can call them? One-minute suspension.
Hearing resumed. Okay, the first interpolator will be Congressman Johnny Pimentel. You have the floor Congressman.
Before I do my interpolation, may I inquire if this committee has already issued a subpoena to SPO for Art Narsoles? Because Narsoles is one of the, if not, the main player in the case of the killing of three Chinese nationals. If I recall, during the last hearing, the committee has already issued a show cause order. So may I inquire if there's already a subpoena to the Comsec?
What's the query of Congressman Johnny Pimentel? What's your query?
If there was already subpoena issued to Art Narsoles. Because if there is none-
Comsec, what's the status of SPO for Art Narsoles?
I will check, sir.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir. We have issued a subpoena, but this was not served. Refused to receive because they are already retired.
Under our House rules, Mr. Chair.
It's a show cause order, sir.
What did you issue, show cause order or subpoena?
Show cause order, sir.
Show cause order. Therefore, Mr. Chair, since it's still no show, I move that we, this committee issue subpoena to SPO for Art Narsoles, Mr. Chair. So move.
Okay, there's a motion to issue subpoena to SPO for Art Narsoles. Any second motion, Julie seconded. Any objection? Hearing not decided, motion is now approved.
Mr. Chair, may I proceed?
You may proceed.
I'll now direct my questions to Chief Superintendent Padilla. Colonel Padilla, kamusta po kayo?
Okay lang po, your honor.
Kumain na po kayo? Nagalmusal na po kayo?
Yes po, your honor.
Kamusta namang po ang lagay ninyo dun sa detention center ninyo?
Okay na lang din po.
Well, we have already taken note of your request. But anyway, Mr. Padilla, or rather Colonel Padilla, may sinumiti po kayong affidavit na bago?
Yes po.
Dated September 2, 2024, authorized po sa Tagig City. Totoo po ba ito?
Yes po, your honor. If I will be given the chance, I can even submit additional documents for that.
Well, that will be upon the chair. But anyway, I have a copy of your affidavit, Colonel Padilla. And dito po, may lagda po kayo sa dalawang pahina. Ito po ay pirma po ninyo? Pinatutuhanan mo po ito na ito ay pirma ninyo? Itong affidavit po ninyo sa dalawang pahina?
Yes, your honor, Mr. Chair.
At ito po ba ay lahat ng nakasaad dito? Pinatutuhanan mo na lahat ito ay totoo?
With all my knowledge, your honor, Mr. Chair.
Ito ba, Colonel Padilla, itong affidavit na bago na sinumiti sa komitiba? Ito ba ay ginawa mo ng kusang loob? O may nagudjok sayo na gumawa nito?
Yes, your honor, Mr. Chair. Sariling at kusa ko pong ginawa.
Tinatanong ko po ito, Colonel Padilla, Mr. Chair. Dahil may sinumiti po kayong affidavit din dated August 27, 2024, hindi po ba?
Yes, your honor, Mr. Chair.
Pero 'yung sinabit po ninyo ang affidavit ng August 27, at itong sinamitho ninyo ngayong September 2, ay magkasalungat. Itong sinabit po ninyo na affidavit ng September 2 ay talawas po doon sa mga sinaad po ninyo ng August 27. Meron pong mga aspeto o mga bagay na hindi ninyo binanggit sa September 8, August 27, pero dito sa September 2 ay nakasaad po. Ang tanong ko po, bakit po nagbago ang isip nyo at binagohin nyo 'yung affidavit ng August 27?
Binaginatan ko po 'yung aking personal safety and that of my family.
Ilang taon na po ba kayo?
64 po.
Kailan mo kayo magre-retire?
This coming November 2024.
September?
November 2024.
November, dalawang buwan na lang po. And that is why it is very appropriate that you should really retire on a high note. So I therefore strongly suggest that you should cooperate with this committee to maintain your integrity since you have served the government for several years. Ngayon, Colonel Padilla, ayon sa iyong salaysay, kayo ay naging superintendent or warden ng Double Penal Colony from 2015 to 2018. So tatlong taon po, hindi po ba?
Yes, your honor, Mr. Chair.
Ano ba ang trabaho ng isang warden? Pwede po bang pakisabi mo dito sa-
I am the overall in charge of the whole Double Prison and Penal Farm during that time, your honor.
So overall in charge po, ano? So ibig sabihin, kayo ang tagapamahala ng buong Double Penal Colony, hindi po ba?
Yes, your honor, Mr. Chair.
Sa madaling salita po, kayo ang nagsusupervise, kayo po ang nagmamanage ng lahat ng gawain sa Double Penal Colony, hindi po ba?
Yes, your honor, Mr. Chair.
So in short, meron pong kasabihan sa Ingles, "the buck stops here." In short, all the decisions regarding procedures or orders, mga utos sa mga provincial, sa mga guards, in short, everything that goes on in that penal colony, kayo po ang nadi-desisyon, hindi po ba?
Yes, your honor, Mr. Chair.
Ngayon, pupunta tayo dun muna sa nilipat ng mga Chinese national. Nung 2016 po, meron pong nilipat na tatlong suspected Chinese drug lords or Chinese nationals who were charged with drug offenses. Ayon sa iyong salaysay, Colonel Padilla, tinutulan mo po itong paglipat dun sa Double Penal Colony. Bakit po kayo tumutol?
That's true, your honor, Mr. Chair. During that time po, talagang wala pong facilities for the high risk and the high-profile inmates sa Double Prison and Penal Farm. That's why the following year, 2017, nag-request po ako ng budget. Because of that, dinadalahan kami ng mga PDL, high-risk and the high-profile. Nag-request po ako ng budget to construct super maximum facility in Double Prison and Penal Farm. Yan po ang naging dahilan. Actually, I have a document opposing the transfer of the Chinese national during that time. And 'yung mga Chinese national po yan, in fact, they have pending cases in Montinlupa City. Na in-state ko po dun sa aking request, masyado pong magastos sa part ng gobyerno from time to time kung i-susubrina to attend a series of hearings in Montinlupa City. Kaya po, inopus ko po yan, pero that was July 2015. In fact, then after October po, wala pong nangyari, nag-request po ulit ako. Nirit-rite ko po na na ibalik po 'yung mga high-risk and high-profile PDL sa Montinlupa. Pero, no action pa rin pong mangyari.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman. Due respect to our colleague Congressman Pimentel, baka pwede muna pumbasahin 'yung affidavit na bago ni Colonel Padilla para at least magkaroon ng idea 'yung mga members.
Your honor, Mr. Chair, can I request for a to to, for an executive session? May mga very sensitive na issue po dun.
One-minute suspension.
Hearing is assumed. Your honors, the parliamentary status is that interpolation was being... questions were being propounded to Colonel Padilla by Honorable Johnny Pimentel and with an interjection made by our senior deputy speaker, Don Gonzalez. And he made a motion to... to read, ask the witness to read the affidavit that he has sworn and signed. Now, the parliamentary status is that there is a pending motion.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Congressman Gonzalez?
Mr. Chairman, I move to withdraw my previous motion, Mr. Chairman.
So you are withdrawing, Your Honor, your motion to ask Colonel Padilla to read?
He is affidavit.
Okay, so...
Mr. Chairman, if I may, have we given the copy of the new affidavit that was signed by Superintendent Padilla to all the members who are present today?
Comsec?
Yeah, that's the reason why they are asking for the... for that affidavit that has been given to this QUADCOM. Can we ask the Comsec to give first the members about this new affidavit?
Please provide copies of the affidavit of current Superintendent Padilla to all our honorable members. And we will give you time to peruse over this.
Perhaps also the previous affidavit that he made.
Wala na bigyan na po sila, lahat?
And all other affidavits that we have in the secretariat, please provide all the members present in our committee hearing today. So...
Mr. Chair, we thank you, Mr. Chairman, for...
Thank you, Congressman Aquino. Congressman Keith Flores?
Mr. Chair, I heard Colonel Padilla again request for an executive session. And I'm reiterating my opposition to it, Mr. Chair, stating the grounds that his testimony does not include matters which may affect national security, nor does it contain any matters which is offensive to public morals or decency, Mr. Chair. I'm reiterating my opposition to it, Mr. Chair.
Okay, there is a manifestation made by Congressman Keith Flores. In fact, it is an objection to the request of Colonel Padilla for a executive session. So in the meantime, what we can continue propounding questions based on the affidavit of Colonel Padilla that we have in our possession now, until maybe another information that he wants to reveal before this committee that is not included in his affidavit. So in that case, we will proceed with the questioning and the interpolation to Colonel or Superintendent Padilla based on the affidavit that he has submitted before this committee. Is that all right, honorable members?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Congressman Keith? Thank you. Congressman Acop?
Mr. Chair?
Congressman Acop and then Congressman Palma. Congressman Acop, you're recognized.
Mr. Chair, I would like to agree with the Honorable Keith Flores. Simply because the questions to be asked will be pertaining to the statements he made in his affidavit. And this has been subscribed and sworn to and therefore partakes of being an official document. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Congressman Acop, for that manifestation. So now we will proceed with the...
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Congressman Palma, I'm sorry. Yes, Congressman Palma, you're recognized.
With the permission of the chair. Just to fast track the proceeding, may I just suggest that we'll give time first. With all due respect to the Honorable Pimentel, give time to Colonel Padilla to review his affidavit and whatever he wants to say. And then from there, we can start the interpolation.
Okay. Thank you, Congressman Palma. Yes, I am sure that Colonel Padilla is quite familiar with this affidavit which he has subscribed and sworn to. You're not denying that it was your... It is your affidavit, correct, Colonel Padilla?
Yes, Your Honor, Mr. Chair.
So if there are any information you wish to reveal before this committee that is not included in your sworn statement, perhaps we can discuss whether we can grant you the executive session that you have requested. Okay lang po ba yan? Maliwanag po yan, Colonel?
Yung lang po ang talagang nalalaman ko sa pangyayari, kasi I was really under pressure during that time. So meron po nga akong documents na pwedeng ipakita na nagpapatutoo dun sa sinasabi ko pong affidavit. Eh, wala pong ibang pwede kong ikwan na hindi po talaga totoong nangyari. Yan lang po ang totoong nangyari, kasi 'yung sinabi ko nga na may mga previous request ako. So na-sense ko talaga na it is really a major government anti-illegal drugs or operations against that PDLs.
Okay, we understand. Yung iyong statement, Colonel, in that case, we will now proceed with the interpolation.
Mr. Chair, just one point of clarification. Colonel Superintendent Padilla, aside from your affidavit, do you want to say something which is important to this committee? Otherwise, the affidavit will suffice. May meron ka pa bang pwede ireveal sa amin na importante?
If you grant me for some time in...
Today, today?
Executive session.
Why don't you tell now? Because the people is also waiting for your...
Yes, Your Honor, Mr. Chair, but it will endanger my, of course, my safety and of my family.
Okay. That's why I'm asking. We perfectly understand your situation, Superintendent Padilla, and as you have committed to this committee that you will share more vital information in relation to the investigation of the QUAD committee. However, since Congressman Johnny Pimentel has already started propounding questions to you based on the affidavit that you have submitted, subscribed, and sworn to, then we continue with that. Until later, we will grant you an executive session. Is that okay?
Mr. Chair?
Congressman Acop?
Pwede po bang malaman kay Superintendent Padilla? Yung bang impormasyon dito na inlagay nyo po dito sa affidavit nyo, hindi pa kompleto?
Yan lang po 'yung ayon sa aking nalalaman, Your Honor, Mr. Chair.
Eh kung kompleto na po ito, bakit po kayo humihingi ng executive session?
Tumpung mga sensitive na issues na hindi ko po...
So meron po kayong hindi inilagay dito sa affidavit po ninyo?
Yes, in fact, it was leading to that sensitive issue.
So kung magkakaroon tayo ng executive session, ang sasabihin po ninyo, wala po rito sa affidavit nito dahil kung ganun na mangyayari, ipapatigil ko 'yung executive session dahil diluloko muna kami eh.
Ganun po ang... Your Honor, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Congressman Acop. So again, the parliamentary status is that interpolations being made by Congressman Johnny Pimentel temporarily stopped because of emotion which eventually was withdrawn by SDS Don Gonzalez on the issue of executive session. Now, we will now proceed with the interpolations and then after the interpolations on the affidavit of Colonel Padilla. And if there are any information that we want to solicit from him that is not within this affidavit, then we will probably grant him his request of an executive session. So we can now proceed with the questioning of Congressman Pimentel.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. That is precisely why it are in driving at. Anyway, the members already have the affidavit, but based on my observations, the affidavit that does not disclose everything that happened in the killing of the three Chinese nationals. Anyway, ipagpatuloy ko po 'yung pagtanong ko. Naitanong ko na po kanina, nanilipat na dun 'yung tatlong Chinese national. Ang tanong ko po, may memorandum ba? Kanino galing 'yung memorandum sa paglipat ng Chinese national galing National Penitentiary going to the Dabo Penal Colony?
Yes, Your Honor, I have... Meron pong transfer order yan from the National Headquarters in New Belibid Prison. Escorted by personnel. Yun po ang sinusunod nung escort based on that...
Okay, meron ang order, meron kang kopya po niyan. Mr. Chair, ang tanong sunod ko po, na tanong, pagdating dun ng Chinese national, saan mo nilagay, anong cell da mo nilagay 'yung mga Chinese national?
Sinipti ko po in one cell within the... Dun pa rin sa prison disciplinary part of prison disciplinary dormitory since wala po kaming facility for the high-profile and high-risk PDL.
Meron ho kayo mga ibang foreigners, hindi po ba? Bago dumating 'yung Chinese national, meron kayo mga foreign nationalities na nakakulong doon. Sila ba ay magkasama dun sa mga Pilipino na bilango o pinaghiwalay na...
Pinaghiwalay po namin, Mr. Chair, pero...
So nakaiwalay, okay. Colonel Padilla, nakaiwalay ang Pilipino at saka 'yung mga foreigner, foreign prisoners or PDLs. Saan yun nilagay 'yung tatlong Chinese national? Dun ba sa mga Pilipino o dun sa mga foreign nationals?
Sa foreigners lang po.
Okay. Mr. Chair, I just want to put it in record that the statement or testimony of Colonel Padilla fully corroborates with the statement of our resource person, Mr. Lupoldo Tan. Dun po sa affidavit ni Mr. Lupoldo Tan, na sinabi niya on paragraph 12, 'yung tatlong Chinese drug lords nakabukod po sila. So it just shows, Mr. Chair, that our resource person, Mr. Lupoldo Tan, was telling the truth kasi kinorobirate na po niya na nakabukod. Ngayon, alam na na honin nyo ang nangyari, hindi po ba, Colonel Padilla? alam na na honin niyo ang nangyari, hindi po ba Colonel Padilla?
Yes, Your Honor, Mr. Chair.
'Yung tatlong, 'yung dalawang pumatay na si Lupoldo Tan at saka si Andy Magdararo ay nilipat ho ninyo sa Bartolina, hindi po ba? If I'm not mistaken, August 11, nilipat ninyo si Lupoldo Tan at saka si Andy Magdararo. Hindi po ba, nilipat ninyo sa Bartolina on the pretext na may nahuling sabo sa cell da nila? Kaya nilipat ninyo 'yung dalawa ng August 11, hindi po ba?
Yes, Your Honor, Mr. Chair.
Okay. On August, after two days po, 'yung Chinese national na dumating doon, na binilanggo ninyo doon sa mga foreign nationals, eh binartolina namampun ninyo at isinilid nun niyo doon sa cell da size kung saan nandun 'yung dalawang PDL, si Lupoldo Tan at saka Andy Magdararo, hindi po ba?
'Yun po ang nangyari, Your Honor, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Itong tanong ko, Mr. Chair, and para malaman ang mga member natin, this is the big question. Sino po ang nagbigay ng order na ilipat si Andy at saka si Tata sa cell da size at ilipat 'yung titlong Chinese national? Sinabi po ninyo kanina na kayo ang overall person in charge ng Dapicol. Sino po ang nagbigay ng order?
The ship commander, Your Honor, Mr. Chair. Nandito po sa blatter po ng lagbok ng ship commander.
Bakit po ship commander? Ano ho ba ang ship commander sa hirarkin ninyo? Hindi po kayo pong overall charge? Ano ho ang position ng over, pangilan po 'yan, 'yung ship commander, Mr. Chair?
From superintendent, meron pa pong deputy superintendent for security operation. Then from deputy superintendent for security operation, meron pa pong commander of the guards. From commander of the guards, meron pa pong ship commander and then camp commander.
So pangilan po 'yung ship commander, pang apat po?
Pang apat po.
Pang apat o pang lima?
Opo.
Pang apat?
Yes, sir.
Abay Colonel Padilla, mahirap po pangpaniwalaan 'yan, Mr. Chair. Dahil sabi mo nga kanina, ikaw ay natasan ng Gobyerno, ikaw ay overall in charge, ikaw ang manager, ikaw ang supervisor ng Dapicol. I don't think all these people here now in this committee will believe you that the decision to transfer the five persons doon sa cell number six ay manghanggaling sa isang lowly official of the Bureau Corps. Sinabi ho niyo kanina, it's on record, ang trabaho po ng superintendent, ng warden, kayo po ang overall in charge. Impossible po na hindi ho niyo alam na ililipat sa Bartolina 'yung limang tao?
At sa level ko po, report na lang po ang nakakarating kasi tulad ng previously, sinabi ko na may kanya-kanya po kaming level of responsibility. Report na lang po, kaya nagbabase po tayo dito sa lagbok. May blatter po kung sino ang totoong naglipat.
Meron ho ba kayong copy nung order na ilipat sila sa memorandum? Ah, doon sa cell da size?
Meron po, kung sino ang nagtransfer.
Sino ang nagpirma?
Ang ship commander po.
So you mean to tell me and you mean to tell this committee, Mr. Chair, na kayo ang overall in charge, kayong superintendent, 'yung number four person ninyo gagawa lang ng order without your knowledge, without your approval? Alam muna natin 'yung bureaucracy natin ng Gobyerno po. Meron po tayong nasa taas, meron pong mga middle management. Lahat po ng mga middle management, like for example, USEC, ASSEC po. Hindi ho po gumagawa ng memorandum order 'yan kung wala pong pahintulot ng secretary. Mas lalo na po sa inyo, na Bureau Corps, because you are semi-military. Hindi ho mangyayari po na magbibigay ng order in this case, 'yung Robert Quinto, 'yung po 'yung deputy, 'yung ship commander na sinasabi ninyo, 'yung po ba ang tinutukoy ninyo sa Robert Quinto?
Ah, yes po, Your Honor, Mr. Chair. Kasi pag nakarating po sa akin 'yan, nakalagbok na po 'yan after na po nung event.
Sandali, hindi 'yung event ang pinag-uusapan natin, Colonel Padilla. Ang pinag-uusapan natin, sino ang nagutos? Sino ang nagorder na ilipat 'yung dalawang pumatay at saka 'yung namatay na tatlong Chinese national? 'Yun ang pinag-uusapan natin. Hindi ho 'yung incidente po ang pinag-uusapan natin.
Nakareflect po rito sa blatter.
Sino po 'yung ship commander?
Ah, Si Juan Bilyahos, ang ship commander.
Buhay pa ba 'yung taong 'yun?
Buhay pa po, pero ayon sa nakalagay dito sa blatter.
Ah wag mo natin pag-usapan po ang blatter, Mr. Chair. 'Yung blatter po, sa pulis po 'yan. Ang pinag-uusapan po natin 'yung order po. 'Yung blatter eh, iba ho 'yung dokumento ho 'yun ng pulis. Pag may krimin po na nangyari, doon po isasalaysay doon. Kung sino mga pumatay, sino ang namatay. Ang pinag-uusapan po natin dito hindi blatter po. And that is not an acceptable document that will prove that you did not order the transfer. So 'yun lang po, Mr. Chair, isa na mga inconsistencies sa affidavit po or sa mga salaysay ni Colonel Padilla. So dito po tayo. Sa salaysay po ninyo, sa paragraph five, binanggit po ninyo na kayo ay nagkausap sa cellphone ni Colonel Ruina Garma. Tutupo ba 'yun? Ito po, sinong pa ang salaysay 'yun ninyo? Kayo po ang nagalagay po dito?
Yes, Your Honor, Mr. Chair. But I, at tulad ng sinabi ko, can I request?
Sige, mamaya po, pupunta po tayo doon. It will be the committee who will decide on that. Pero nandito po tayo sa hearing and I'm giving the floor, so I have to proceed with my interpolations. Ngayon po, ang tanong ko po sa inyo, paano ho niyo nakausap si Ruina Garma? Meron ba kayong telepono?
Telepono po, through Jimmy Fortaleza.
Meron ho kayong telephone number ni Colonel Ruina Garma?
Wala po, through Jimmy, PDL Jimmy Fortaleza lang po.
Okay, sa salaysay po ninyo, nakausap po ninyo si Colonel Garma through PDL Jimmy Fortaleza. Mr. Chair, I'd like to put it on record that the statement testimony of Colonel Padilla definitely corroborates with the affidavit of PDL Jimmy Fortaleza. On paragraph five, nung Agosto, nung unang linggo ng Agosto 2016, tinawagan ako ni Garma at sinabi sa akin, gusto niyang makausap si Superintendent Padilla. Pinuntahan ko si Superintendent Padilla para ibigay sa kanyang cellphone at makapag-usap sila at pinatutunayan, pinatutotohanan ni Colonel Padilla na to nag-usap nga sila through Jimmy Fortaleza. So again, Mr. Chair, nagpapatunay lang to na 'yung resource person natin na si Jimmy Fortaleza ay nagsasabi po ng totoo. Ngayon po, Mr. Chair, ang tanong ko po, Colonel Padilla, nung nag-usap na po kayo ni Colonel Ruina Garma, ano ho ang sinabi niya sa inyo?
'Yun pong nakalagay po sa aking affidavit, can I...
Okay, babasahin ko po 'yung sinabi ni Garma. Sabi po ni Chief Garma, 'yung po tawag ninyo, "May mga tao kami diyan na gagawa at huwag muna questionin. And whether you like it or not, we will operate and do not interfere. Baka madamay pa pamilya mo. Magko-operate ka na lang or mananagot ka sa amin." Ano ho ba 'yung plano na lang ipagawa? Naintindihan niyo ba kasi 'yung sinabi lang dito, meron kaming ipapagawa, meron kaming ipapa-operate. Ano ho ba ang pagkakaintindi niyo sa sinabi po ni Colonel Garma?
Tungkol po doon sa pag-i eliminate nung three Chinese nationals.
O, so sinabi niya, in short, Mr. Chair, ang sinabi po ni Garma, Colonel Padilla, na meron silang operations doon, ipapapatay nila 'yung tatlong Chinese national, hindi po ba?
Yes, Your Honor, Mr. Chair.
Okay. After noon po, pagkatapos ninyo magkausap ni Colonel Garma, sinabi niyo po kay Jimmy Fortaleza, "Sige, magkikita na lang kami" ni Colonel Garma, hindi po ba?
Wala po akong matandaang sinabi kong ganun. Ang natandan ko po, 'yung kung ano 'yung nilagay ko sa aking affidavit, eh, kasi during that time, talagang intense pressure na po ako kasi nangyari na 'yung sa Abu Yugliti, 'yung prison facility rin po namin doon na pinasok rin po ng mga operatives.
So, Mr. Chair, iba giho niyo sabihin, Colonel Padilla, na hindi niyo kilala, hindi kayo nagkita, not ebinuance ni Colonel Garma?
Hindi po, kasi 'yung cellphone, hangga't maari, ayaw niyang makuha ko 'yung number niya. Kaya 'yung cellphone na binigay nila kay Jimmy Fortaleza ang ginagamit po, ayaw pong ma-identify 'yung kanyang number.
Pero napaka-impossible po na napakalaking operation. Tapos, through telephone lang po, Mr. Chair, isinunod po ninyo si Garma? Kilala po ba ninyo si Colonel Garma nung nag-usap po kayo? May first-hand ba kayo, just through a telephone call, naniniwala po kayo kaagad? Alam na ho ninyo natin na marami hong scammer. Sasabihin lang na ako si Colonel Garma, may operation ako dyan, meron kaming ipapatay. Eh lalo na ito, ang order is may ipapapatay kami dyan na Chinese national, ay naniniwala kayo kaagad? Kahit na hindi niyo kilala 'yung tao?
Kilala ko po siya, not personally, professionally, with her position as Deputy Chief of CIDG of Davao.
O, so kilala po ninyo, sabi niyo po kanina, hindi niyo kilala. So ngayon, Mr. Chair, pinatutotohanan mo, nakilala mo si Colonel Garma?
Sa position lang po, pero personally, wala po kaming, at saka doon lang po sa cellphone.
Okay. Mr. Chair, pagkatapos ng nag-usap kayo ni Garma, inutusan ka, huwag kang makialam, meron kaming operations dyan, may ipapapatay kami. Ano na ang sunod na nangyari? Nag-usap pa ba kayo uli ni Colonel Garma?
Wala na pong nangyaring pag-uusap pagtapos nun.
Actually, Mr. Chair, ng maghuling pagkatapos sila mag-usap, ni Colonel Garma, doon na po ginawa 'yung plano, which I certainly believe, huwag sana po kayo magagalit, which I certainly believe that Colonel Padilla is heavily involved in the planning. Kasi po, unang una na question, hindi po mangyayari ang pag-transfer ng dalawang pumatay at lahat tatlong namatay kung hindi manggagaling sa warden ang order.
If I may, Mr. Chair, Your Honor? 'Yung unang sinabi nila, instruction na kailangan gumawa ko, pero hindi ko po pinansin 'yun. Kaya galit na sila sa akin. Gumawa po sila ng ibang strategy kasi parang nababagalan sila sa akin. Wala po akong ginagawa, hindi po ako kumikilos during that time. So gumawa sila ng another strategy na parang blind nila ako sa pangyayari. Kasi, further, Mr. Chair, can...
Please proceed.
Kasi po, sinipti ko talaga 'yan dyan sa prison disciplinary. 'Yung prison disciplinary, ah 'yung foreigner cell, within the prison disciplinary din po 'yun, kabilang cell da lang. Kaya po, nung gumalaw na sila, may mga operations na kuwan, blind na po ako roon, as I said, nakalagbok po lahat sa blatter. 'Yung pati pagwitbit nila sa kabila, without my consent. Ganun po ang nangyari, kumbaga, parang minadali na po nila 'yung operation na 'yun. Renewal na nila ako dahil hindi ako gumagalaw. Gumawa sila ng sariling strategy.
Mr. Chair, ano 'yung sabi ni Colonel Padilla, sila? Ginawa nila, gumawa sila, sino po itong sila?
'Yun na po, involved na po 'yung dalawang PDL at behind that, hindi ko na po alam kung may...
Sandali, Mr. Chair, kayo po ang warden, 'yung dalawang PDL bilanggo po, sila ba magdi-decide na sila nilipat sa Bartolina? Sila ba ang magdi-decide na sila ang gagalaw? 'Yung ganito po ha, para mabigyan po ng buong overview or picture lahat ng tao po dito. Itong nangyari pong incidente nito, kung ihahambing po natin sa pelikula, 'yung dalawang tao, si Andy Magdararo at saka si Lupoldo Tan, mga aktor po 'yun. Ngayon, 'yung executive producer po ng incidente po nito, si Colonel Ruina Garma. Ngayon, ang executive producer nag-uutos lang po 'yan, pero ang floor director dito, ang executive director po dito, si Colonel Padilla, it happened within his premises. He is the man in charge. I do not believe that there was no order coming from him. At saka sinasabi po niya ngayon, gumagalaw sila. Gaga law ba 'yung dalawang PDL doon sa loob ng kulungan na walang pahintulot ng warden? Gaga law ba 'yung sinasabi niyong ship commander ng order na walang pahintulot po sa inyo? That is why, Mr. Chair, marami pa ho ditong mga inconsistencies. But I know that there are many, ano, isa pa lang 'yan na sinasabi kong may inconsistencies, but based on my interpolations and based on the appreciation of the affidavits, I have found out or I have concluded, Mr. Chair, that the affidavit of Colonel Padilla corroborates with the affidavit of Mr. Lupoldo Tan with regards to the Chinese nationals. I also conclude, Mr. Chair, that his testimony corroborates with the affidavit of Jimmy Fortaleza. Inaminahon niya na nakausap niya si Garma dahil kay Jimmy Fortaleza. However, I believe that Colonel Padilla is holding more information vital to this hearing. Hanggang doon po lang kayo 'yung mga affidavit po ninyo, Mr. Chair, hanggang doon lang po kayo kay Garma, pero sasabuo sasalaysay ni Lupoldo Tan. Nandun po kayo, una, binanggit po kayo nung kinontak na kayo ni Colonel Garma. Sabi niyo po, magkikita kayo, and I believe, Lupoldo Tan, bakit po? Pinalabasunin niyo 'yung dalawang PDL, hindi pinalabas na ano, doon lang sa may gate para makausap po si Artner Solis at saka si Colonel Garma. And then nung nangyari pong incidente, pumunta po kayo, inaminonin niyo din 'yun sa affidavit po ninyo, Mr. Chair. Pagkatapos nung nangyaring incidente, pumunta po kayo sa cell da size at tinignan niyo 'yung namatay na mga Chinese nationals. Lahat po sa buong salaysay, kayo po ang binabanggit nung dalawang PDLs. Mahirap po mangyari isang ganitong kadrumal-dumal na krimin na kayo po ang in charge ng Dapicol na wala kayong kaalam-alam. Hindi, impossible po mangyari 'yun. I have been in the government service for the past 25 years and all chief executives, ihahahambing ko na lang ikaw na isa kang chief executive ng warden, the pack stops there, all decisions. Kaya po kayo nilagay doon dahil kayo magsusupervisor, magmamanage. Impossible ang manager supervisor, hindi po alam ang nangyayari doon sa bilango. Therefore, Mr. Chair, I have come to a conclusion, but that is my opinion, that our resource person is lying to us, holding vital information. Marami ho pong inconsistencies doon sa affidavit po niya. 'Yun lang po, Mr. Chair.
Thank you Congressman Pimentel. The next to interpolate is Congressman Jay Kong Hun. You're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, maari ko bang idirekta ang katanungan kay Chief Superintendent Herardo Padilla?
Please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Colonel Padilla, naiba ang iyong, naiba ang iyong affidavit, ah, in some material aspect, ano? Kaya siyempre, magdadahan-dahan tayo, lalong-lalo na sa iyong mga affidavit dahil binago mo ang iyong affidavit. Siyempre, gusto nating makasiguro, lalong-lalo na sa mga pangyayari. Ahm, sabi nga nila, recantations are generally looked upon with this favor. But we're doing this, I'm clarifying this point, to ensure that your latest statement, as contained in your September 2 affidavit, could pass the credibility test. As the highest ranking official of your institution, you should know that a commander can delegate his authority, but not his responsibility. So responsable po kayo, ah, Colonel Padilla, kung ano po 'yung nangyayari sa loob ng Bilibid. Ayon sa'yo, sometime in 2015, 2016, may mga nilipat na suspected Chinese drug lord mula sa Bilibid papunta sa inyo sa Davao Prison. At ikaw ay, at ikaw ay nag-object dito dahil wala kayong facility para sa mga high-profile inmates, katulad na lang nung mga Chinese drug lords. Again, Colonel Padilla, paralinawin po natin, sino po bang may authority na maglipat ng inmate mula sa Bilibid papunta sa Davao Prison?
The Director of Corrections, Your Honor, Mr. Chair.
Sino po?
During the time, ah, it was a... From order po of Director General of the Bureau of Corrections, then General Ricardo Rinyer Cruz.
Pakilinawan po 'yung inyong pagsasalita, sir?
Director General Rinyer Cruz po ang n transfer sa Davao.
Comfort po ba ito, sir, ng memo or any directive?
Yes, Your Honor, Mr. Chair.
So may kasulatan po kayo ng transfer?
Yes, Your Honor, Mr. Chair.
Colonel Padilla, hindi ba parang ito ay highly irregular? Normal po ba itong nangyayari from Bilibid malilipat sa ibang facility?
That's why I oppose the transfer, Your Honor, Mr. Chair, with my letter during the time.
Ano po ang tingin niyo, bakit kaya, anong dahilan, kung bakit inilipat ito sa Davao?
Ah, hindi ko na po alam ang tamang dahilan. Ah, dahil, in fact, they have pending cases pa nga eh, appeared in their record.
Hindi po ba kaya siya inilipat sa Davao dahil mas kontrolado nila 'yung facility kesa sa Bilibid?
Maring isa pong dahilan.
O dahil mas kontrolado nila kayo?
Hindi po eh, kasi wala nga po kaming kamalay-malay na dadatnan kami ng ganitong high-risk and high-profile PDL.
Colonel Padilla, di ba siyempre pag ililipat mo 'yung isang tao from Bilibid to Davao, hindi ba kaya mo siya ililipat dahil mas kontrolado mo 'yung mga taong namumuno dun sa Davao Prison? Kaya ibig sabihin, mas kontrolado nila kayo, kaya mas pinili nila na dun ilipat 'yung mga nakakulong?
Ah, yes po, Your Honor, Mr. Chair, kasi, ah, National Headquarters po namin 'yung, ah, new Bilibid Prison.
Hindi po ba kayo nagduda rito?
Again, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Ang sabi niyo po, Colonel Padilla, suspected, ibig sabihin yan, eh, hindi pa final conviction, tama po ba na sa inyong statement po yun?
Yes, Your Honor, Mr. Chair.
At nakakulong sila dahil non-billable 'yung offense?
Yes, Your Honor, Mr. Chair.
You describe them as high-profile inmates, bakit ganito ang classification siya sa kanila?
Ah, pagka 'yung, ah, high-risk, yun po 'yung mga notorious, and then 'yung high-profile known mga, known, may mga known records, ah, of criminal activities talaga.
Kilala mo ba sila bago sila inilipat sa ano, from Bilibid to Davao Prison, kilala mo ba sila?
Hindi ko po kilala, Your Honor, Mr. Chair.
Okay, Colonel Padilla, klaruhin din natin, Colonel Padilla. Sabi niyo, in 2016, three of the Chinese drug lords identified at Tu Kintin, Wong Meng Pin, and Lee Yan Yan were killed by their fellow inmate, Mr. Magdaro and Mr. Tan, tama po ba?
Yes, Your Honor.
Si Wong Meng Ping ay parehong kilala ni Tata at Andy na si Peter Wong, tama po ba?
Yes, Your Honor, Mr. Chair.
At eto, at eto namang si Lin Lan Yan, ay parehong tao na kilala ni na Tata at Andy, ah, na si Jackson Lee, tama po ba?
Yes, Your Honor, Mr. Chair.
Sa madaling salita, wala tayong pagtatalo na ito mga pangalan na affidavit mo, ayun, ayun din 'yung pinatay ni Tata at ni Andy.
Yes, Your Honor, Mr. Chair.
Colonel Padilla, ayon sa affidavit mo, ah, katulad nga na sinabi ni, um, Honorable Pimentel kanina, fighters at scaling, I've been subjected to an intense pressure by CIDG Officer Ruina Garma. Tinawagan siya ni, ah, Ruina Garma. Bago ang pag-uusap niyo, kilala mo ba si Ruina Garma?
Kilala ko lang po siya bilang Deputy Chief ng CIDG, Davao City, Your Honor.
Sino bang mas, may tuturin mo mas senior sa inyong dalawa?
Hindi ko po, ah, hindi ko po masabi kung sinong mas senior sa amin.
Hindi mo masabi kung sinong mas senior sa inyo, pero ganun na lamang siya makapagsalita sa isang superintendent na katulad mo. Hindi ka ba nagtaka kung bakit ganyan kanya kausapin?
Magkaiba po kasi ang level namin sa Bureau at saka dun sa PNP, Your Honor, Mr. Chair.
Nung sinabi ni Garma sa'yo, 'yung mga salita na "may mga tao kami dyan at gagawa at huwag mo kwestionin, and whether you like it or not, we will operate and do not interfere, makan, makan madamay ang pamilya mo, so makipag-cooperate ka." So anong ibig sabihin ng mag-cooperate sila? Ang ibig bang sabihin ito eh, may papatayin sila?
Meron po, Your Honor, Mr. Chair.
Nakatira ka ba sa Davao nung mga panahon na yun?
Yes po, Your Honor, Mr. Chair, even my family.
So noong bang sinabi na yun na, sa iyong pagkakaintindi, meron ka bang, ah, inkling o meron ka bang hula kung sino 'yung balak nilang patayan? Nung panahon na yun, sa pakikipag-usap mo kay Ruina Garma?
Yun na pong tatlong Chinese nationals.
Si ano ba, si, itong si CIDG Officer Garma, ito ba 'yung kaparehas na si Ruina Garma na ni-inappoint ni Presidente Duterte ah, para mag-head ng PCSO?
Yes, Your Honor, Mr. Chair.
Colonel Padilla, ah, kilala mo ba si Presidente Duterte?
As a former mayor and president of the country, Your Honor.
Personal, kilala mo ba siya?
No, Your Honor, Mr. Chair.
Nakita na ba kayo?
Hindi po, nangyari, nakita na po kami.
Ah, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman?
Thank you.
Ah, Mr. Chairman, ah, Colonel Padilla, kasi may mga, may mga proof kami na magkasama kayo eh.
As a, nung mayor po siya, Your Honor, ah, Mr. Chair, may mga, ah, 'yung mga kasal ganun, parang...
Pero sinabi mo ko na yun, never met him, personally. Oh, binago mo na naman, how can we believe in your statement?
Hindi, during the itong, ah, official function...
Ang tanong sa'yo, well, in fact, that was also the question of Congresswoman Brosas during the previous hearing. Tinanong kanya kung kilala mo si Presidente Duterte.
If I may...
Sabi niyo po, sandali, patapusin muna ako, sa inabi mo na hindi. Kaya, you must tell all, you must be truthful to your statement.
Hindi ko po talaga kilala, Your Honor, may mga, during, may mga question, ah, kasal, simply public picture ganuns in Davao City.
Meron kayo, meron kayong mga ano, pictures, meron kami. Mamaya pag sa panahon ko, ah, sana naman, sana naman sabihin mo na 'yan lahat ng totoo. Kasi eh, alam na namin 'yung buong story.
Ayan.
'Yung puzzle buo na yun, oh, iyan oh.
That was a taking, ah, during, ah, when he was a mayor in Davao City.
Anong serkompstans, di ba pareho kayong ninong dyan, nagkumpare kayo? That happened sa Mal Island?
Hindi po, hindi po...
Saan yan?
Hindi po, sasamal po yan.
Oh.
Pero hindi po kami magkumpare ninong.
Oh, bakit pareho kay may lay?
Nag-attend lang po kami yan, kasi 'yung tinasal dyan, yun 'yung kaibigan ko, ah, Mike Ruiz. Pero personally, hindi, picture-taking lang po yun, as a public figure, Your Honor, Mr. Chair.
Anyway, darating din tayo dyan, mamaya, pag ako na, magtatanong sa'yo.
Can you please proceed, Cong Kong-hun?
Ah, Colonel Padilla, mas maganda po sana kung magsasabi po tayo ng totoo, kasi ang pagkakasabi ko po, ang tanong ko po sa inyo, kung nagkita na kayo ni, ah, dating Presidente Rodrigo Rova Duterte, ano sagot mo? Hindi. So mas maganda po, magsabi po tayo ng totoo sa ating mga susunod na katanungan, ano po? So lagi po nating iisipin na kayo po ay may sinumpaan dito at magsabi po tayo ng totoo. May continue, Mr. Chair?
Please proceed.
Colonel Padilla, sabi mo sa affidavit niyo, nakaranas ka ng intense pressure, at totoo 'yung threat sa'yo, kasi, kasi alam mo, for a fact, "Operations made against a certain drug lord in Laiti days before she called me." Anong ibig mong sabihin dito sa iyong statement na yun?
Meron na pong nangyaring, ah, same operation din, ah, involving, ah, known, ah, inmate, ah, drug lord in Laiti, a week before the Davao incident.
Papano mo nalaman ito?
Isa po sa operating prison and penal form namin 'yung Abu Yug Laiti.
Okay. Ah... Colonel Padilla, sabi mo sa iyong ano, no, sabi mo sa iyong statement, "I you became wary of your safety, of my safety, and I began to observe the personnel of Davao Penal Colony. You among them were the people referred to by CIDG Karma." So ang ibig mong sabihin, hindi mo alam kung kelan o papaano ang sinong mga kasama sa operation?
Yes, Your Honor, Mr. Chair.
Wala kang alam dito?
Ah, yun, yun pong si, ah, CIDG Karma. Ang alam kong, ah, meron pong utak niyang operation na yan.
Pero kilala mo kung sino ang mga target?
Yes, Your Honor, 'yung three Chinese nationals.
At nung sinabi sa'yo ni Garma, 'yung ganun, ah, hindi ka ba humingi ng detalye sa kanya? Nung pinag-usapan niyo kung sino 'yung mga target, ano 'yung detalye ang ibinigay niya sa'yo?
Basta yun lang po, 'yung three Chinese national na, ah, subject nila dahil, ah, mga member po yun ng, ng, ah, Bamboo Triad and, ah, Sinalua Drug Cartel, operating in the country.
Bakit ganun ang kapangyarihan niyang si Garma, ni ano, ni Ruina Garma? Bakit ganun siya, ka-impluwensya, ka, 'yung kanyang kapangyarihan, bakit ganun?
Dahil CIDG po siya ng Davao City. So under po sa area ng operation nila, 'yung, ah, Davao, buong Davao.
Hindi ba dahil sa iyong palagay eh, kaya mo rin siya sinusunod at, ah, hinahayaan mong kausapin kang ganun dahil, ah, tingin mo ba nakarekta siya kay ano, Pangulong Rodrigo Rova Duterte?
Marahil, ganun, Your Honor, kasi naging mayor si Presidente Duterte. Ah, kahit na during the time na, ah, siya ang Deputy CIDG and, ah, naging, naging station commander pa po ng, ah, isang presinto sa Davao City.
Can they wrap up, Congressman?
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair. Last question, Mr. Chair, pagkatapos ang usapan na yun, ni ni Garma, hindi na ba kayo nag-usap ulit?
Wala na po, wala na pong nangyaring, ah, kasunod pa na pag-uusap.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair, I will, ano, nalang sa next round, Mr. Chair, ituloy kayang katanungan. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Congressman Kong-hun. The next to interpolate is Congressman Akop. Congressman Akop, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Superintendent Padilla, dalawa po ang inyong affidavit, hindi po ba? Isang 27, ah, August at saka isang 2 September.
Yes, Your Honor, Mr. Chair.
Magkacontra.
Yes, Your Honor, Mr. Chair, binago ko po dahil...
So ibig sabihin, nagsinungaling ka nung una, at sinumpaan mo yun?
Because of my...
Paano kami maniniwala ngayon sa'yo na totoo na 'yung pangalawa mong affidavit? Kung dun sa umpisa, una pa lang, nagsinungaling ka na?
Because of my personal safety, Your Honor, Mr. Chair.
Because of your personal safety, nagsinungaling ka?
Opo, ah, kasi...
Ngayon, gumawa ka ng second affidavit?
Hindi ko naman po akalain na...
Hindi, hindi, hayan mo muna, patapusin mo muna ako. Gumawa ka ng second, ah, affidavit mo disregarding your personal safety eh, already. Tama po ba ang aking kaisipan?
Hindi ko po akalain na, ah, hindi sa, ah, hearing, ang pagkakalam ko pa, ko po is a true executive session. Ah...
Ah, kasi, tama po 'yung sabi ni, ni Honorable Kong-hun, 'yung recantation, ah, is not looked upon with favor by the courts. Kasi yung nga'y sinabi ko, nagsinungaling ka na dun swan na, sinumpaan mo, tapos babaguhin mo. Yun po yun. Ngayon, ah, umpisahan po natin, nailipat 'yung tatlong Chinese na PDL sa iyong lugar, kanino nanggaling 'yung utos?
From, ah, Higher Headquarters, Your Honor.
Ah, hindi ko naman, sino po dun sa Higher Headquarters na nagutos?
'Yung Director of Corrections.
Sino po 'yung Director of Corrections na nagutos, nailipat 'yung tatlo sa Davao Penal Colony?
Based on the record po, Your Honor, Director General, then, ah, Rinyer Cruz.
At sinabi mo rin na nag-object ka rito?
Yes, Your Honor, Mr. Chair.
Do you have any piece of evidence would, that would show, o magpapakita na nag-object po kayo?
Yes, in fact, ah, it was, ah, the first, ah, letter which I opposed to the transfer dated July 27, 2015, and reiterate ko po ng October 2015.
Oh, sige, narinig ko na yun, sinunod mo kanina eh. Ah, tinatanong ko lang, kung meron po kayong evidencia, could you please submit to this committee 'yung evidencia po na yun, na kayo po ay nag-object? Thank you. Ah, punta po tayo dun sa statement niyo na, ah, "You were subjected to intense pressure by then CIDG Officer Ruina Garma, who called me through the cellphone of another inmate Fortaleza, at sinabi sa'yo ni, ah, Madam Garma, na may mga tao kami dyan nagagawa at huwag mo nang kwestionin, and whether you like it or not, we will operate and do not interfere, makan madamay ang pamilya mo."
Yes, Your Honor.
True?
Yes, Your Honor, Mr. Chair.
Now, kung nakatanggap, kung natanggap mo itong mensaheng ito mula kay Colonel, Colonel Garma, what would have been the proper thing that you would have done? Ano po dapat ang ginawa niyo?
Hindi ko po, ah, hindi ko po actually, ah, binigyan ng kuwan 'yung kanyang sinabi, kumbaga...
Sinabi, hindi mo pinagbigyan, pero sinabi mo, "You experienced intense pressure..." Sinabi, hindi mo pinagbigyan pero sinabi mo, you experienced intense pressure, tapos.
Yes, ah during the time, your honor, Mr. Chair, nagkaroon po ng ganun.
Oo nga.
Kasi gusto nilang during the time madaliin po 'yung, 'yung pagsasagawa nung.
Ano, pagsasagawa ng ano?
Pagpatay doon sa tatlong Chinese.
So at that point in time, alam mo na napapatayin 'yung tatlo?
Alam ko po, your honor.
Oe, anong ginawa mo nga? Yun ang tanong ko nga eh, ano ang ginawa mo, nung nalaman mo, napapatayin 'yung tatlo na sa loob ng iyong piitan? Marami kang paksi-syon nung haling Colonel eh.
Kasi nakakulong po yun, hindi ko talaga akalain na mailalabas po doon sa pinagkulungan nila.
Merong ano?
Hindi ko po akalain na mailalabas po dahil nakasipkeeping po doon, ako po ang nagorder na isipkeeping dyan.
Pero ang timano, inamin mo na alam mo na napapatayin 'yung tatlo, pero wala kang ginawa.
Yes, your honor, Mr. Chair.
Hindi mo man lang ini-report, doon sa mga nakakataas para tulungan ka, napatigilin o tigilin 'yung ganun, ano mangyayari?
Your honor, Mr. Chair. Kaya nga umihingi ako ng executive session kasi napakasalan po 'yung.
Sige, let us see kung kuwan, pero akong unang ah magpapatigil nung executive session, kung 'yung sasahibihin mo ay hindi ah importante dito sa mga issue na inimbestigahan dito sa committee na ito?
It's very sensitive, your honor.
Maliwanan po siguro yun, ano? Ah now, sinabi mo kanina na sa pagsagot po ninyo sa aking mga kasamahan, na merong unang pagtatangka. Tama po ba?
Yes, your honor, Mr. Chair.
Sino, ah paano mo nalaman na may unang pagtatangka?
Doon po sa tawag ni.
Tawag ni?
CIDG Karma.
So ibig mo sabihin, 'yung una eh, yun ang una?
Yun po.
Yun ang unang pagtatangka?
Opo.
So ano po 'yung ah nalaman po ninyo, 'yung pangalawa ng pagtatangka na sinabi po ninyo?
Wala naman pong, yun lang po, 'yung unang ah usapan lang po na yun.
So kasi narinig ko kanina, merong first try eh, na sinabi mo sa katanungan ng aking mga kasamahan?
Opo.
So wala na 'yung pangalawa, yun na't yun na?
Yes, your honor.
Okay. Thank you. Ah. Doon po sa pagtatanong na aking mga kasamahan at pagsasagot ng mga ibang testigo, hindi ka pa ba naniniwala na may plano talaga na patayin 'yung tatlo?
Naniniwala nga po ako.
So naniniwala ka, ang sinasabi mo lang, hindi ka kasama doon sa plano?
Naunahan po ako doon sa plano.
Ano ibig mong sabihin?
Naunahan po ako kasi.
Naunahan ka nino?
Eh nung, nung pangyayari, kasi inexpect nila na ako ang unang kikilos.
Ah iba naman 'yung impormasyon ko, si, si Congressman Padwano na magtatanong sa'yo, hindi ikaw ang pipiit, isang tao na wala na rito sa mundo dahil din dyan sa okasyon na 'yan. Di ba?
Yes, your honor.
Ikaw kasama ka sa plano kasi walang mangyayari sa piitan na yun kung hindi mo alam o kung ayaw mo. Tama po ba?
Ganun po, your honor, Mr. Chair.
May nangyayari sa piitan na hindi mo nalalaman?
Ganun po ang ah, ah nangyari.
O nangyari lang dito sa pangyayaring ito?
Opo, opo.
Okay. Ah yun po 'yung inyong depensa. 'Yung, 'yung pong ah paggalugad, kanino pong utos talaga yun? Para magkaroon ng kasalanan 'yung dalawang PDL para ma-Bartolina sila? At anong 'yung paggalugad din doon sa, sa foreign ah part ng inyong detention? Sino po, ginalugad din po sila para sila mapunta sa Bartolina? Tama po? Sino nagutos nun?
Tulad ng sinabi ko po, meron po akong.
Tinatanong ko lang po kung sino ang nagutos?
Sa security operation po.
Security operation, sino po yun?
Ang security operation ko during the time is Robert Kinto.
Kinto? Tinuturo mo na dahil patay na siya?
Hindi po.
Di ba?
Siya po ang.
Hindi nga, patay na siya, di ba?
Yes, your honor.
Yes, binaril din siya, kaya huwag na tayo pumunta rin. Kasi kanina, ah nung last hearing, sinabi ni Tignetti Foro na ang nagutos ng paggalugad doon sa mga, sa lugar ng mga inchik at saka 'yung dalawang PDL, kayo po ang tinuro. It's a matter of record, nandun po. Kaya ginawa 'yung galugad na yun para magkaroon ng dahilan, para madala sila sa Bartolina kung saan sila papatayin. Kasi ah nandun din doon sa statement na sinabi nung dalawang nautusan na papatay na mahirapan sila dahil nandun sa ibang lugar 'yung tatlong inchik at nasa ibang lugar sila. Kaya ginawa ng paraan na mapupunta sila sa iisang lugar, sa Zelda number six ng Bartolina. Tapos ah inamin din ng iyong incharge sa Bartolina na punong-puno 'yung Bartolina. Pero 'yung Zelda number six, dadalawa lang ang nandun. At dun din nala 'yung tatlong inchik na pinatay. Kaya kung tutusin kung ikaw ay investigador talaga, makikita mo na parang may plano. Di ba, ikaw na rin nagsabi.
Meron po talaga.
Sabi mo na may plano.
Meron po talaga.
Yes, kaya lang, ang sinasabi mo, hindi ka kasama sa plano, pero hindi naman mangyayari po ito kung tatanggihan niyo o hindi niyo papayagan. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you Congressman Akop. The next to interpolate is Congressman Padwano. You're recognized.
Thank you Chairman. Anyway, ah, Mr. Chairman, eto lang po, ah Colonel Padilla, kasi buo na po 'yung puzzle, buo na namin po. Ngayon, we'll just requesting you to tell the truth. Now, in my question, pag hindi mo kayang sagutin in public, you will just tell me na mag-executive, you will request for an executive session, okay?
Kaya nga po ah, umihingi po ako ng to, ah for an executive session?
Eh nga po, tanungin muna kita, just to establish the premise that indeed
Di ba, your honor?
You can allow, you can be allowed to, for your request, okay? Ano lang po, premise lang?
Sige po.
Okay? Sabihin mo lang pag hindi mo masagot, okay? Executive session na lang, just in case, okay? Now, number one, ah actually, Colonel Padilla, based on our investigation, alam namin, you're the most less corrupt in Dabaw Penal Colony. Alam po namin yun. Nacheck na po namin 'yung records, nacheck na rin po namin 'yung mga statements coming from your peers during the time. For example, if I ask you, do you know Doctor Derla?
Yes.
Di ba, he was also ambus, but fortunately nabuhay.
Yes, your honor.
Tama? And the time he was assigned? Di ba, he was assigned in Dabaw Penal Colony?
Yes, your honor.
Okay. Now, so alam mo yun, alam mo rin siguro ang kwento doon, alam mo, di ba? And can you commit to us that you will divulge the reason behind?
Yes, your honor.
Okay, second, wag na tayo, ito actually ang bagong ano mo, 'yung nine to, nine to eleven yun, mali to eh. Hindi totoo to eh. Hindi totoo 'yung paragraph nine, ten, eleven in your affidavit, hindi totoo po to. Kasi if I ask you, kanina tinanong ka ni ano, ni Chairman Akop, regardless of the galugad, mali na po, walang pakialam na si Kinto the time. Sinabi na po ni Foro na at your orders, galuguhin, maggaluga doon sa inchik at saka sa dalawang PDL. Establish na po yun. Now, sabi mo dito, during the time of duty ka na, anong nangyari, di ba? Tama? Okay. Now, if you are of duty, sino nakaduty during the time? Second, high ranking, kasi twenty-four seven dapat 'yan, di ba, BuCor? Sayo, sino 'yung next, suppose your deputy?
Deputy po, supposed to be, in absence of a deputy.
No, no, tinatanong ko ngayon sino? Sino 'yung nandun?
Commander of the guards po.
Eh saan si Kinto during the time?
Wala po doon, ah outside, dahil nakatira po sa labas.
So wala siya?
Wala siya.
Wala rin siyang travel sa Manila during, official travel during the time?
Parang ah nagkaroon po ng, parang may ah Wednesday siguro, Sabado po nung nangyari.
Yeah, August thirteen, tinanong ko na po eh 'yung record si. August thirteen, he was not during the week?
Yes.
Tama? Okay. Kaya 'yung statement po dito na 'yung security for operation, blah, 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 Robert Kinto, eh patay na yun eh. Pero alam ko rin 'yung kwento dito, alam mo rin siguro?
Yes.
Okay. Next question is Doctor Derla and ah, eto sinabi ko na kanina, you're not, you're the most least, less corrupt. Eto, with your respect of course to, to ah former Colonel, now this is Kinto. Alam mo naman 'yung relasyon ni, ni Kinto, ni Derla sa tatlong Chinese, especially kay Tony Lim. Alam mo yun, di ba?
Yes, your honor.
Now, can you divulge it during the ano, executive session?
Yes, your honor.
At least para lang po, mag-clear din natin 'yung pangalan ni Kinto with regards to that killing.
Kaya nga po, humihingi ako ng.
Eh okay na, okay na. I just want to establish muna, kaya nga nung nakaraang hearing pa, sinabi ko na na, alam mo po namin 'yung puzzle? Tapos na po yun. Tapos na po yun. And well in fact, siguro, I just want to confirm to you during the first hearing, kaya hindi mo po masabi-sabi na tinawa, nakausap mo si Karma? Because alam mo, si Karma, her record doon sa Dabaw, di ba? As CIDG, as Chief Police of Station, di ba? Very close to the president, di ba? Alam mo yun, di ba? Kaya, kaya medyo, wala kang choice.
Yes, that's true.
The same as true for all those persons involved in this particular plan, tama?
Yes.
Okay. Now, so do you commit, sabihin mo na lahat, na hindi na ako magtatanong doon? Sabihin mo na na, you narrate na lang doon sa executive session po?
Yes.
Kasi gusto ko rin i-clear 'yung pangalan ni Deputy Superintendent Kinto with regards to what happened.
Yes, your honor.
Pero I will not clear his name with regards to his affiliation with the three Chinese. And pwede nating, well in fact, ala, kilala mo rin, si Macariola? Tama?
Yes, your honor.
Kilala ba? And do you confirm that Macariola is very close to classmate ni Kinto?
Yes, your honor.
Oh, di ba? Okay, tell all ka na doon, ayop ah. Ayop, kasi as stated by Congressman Akop, pag hindi ka nagsabi ng totoo, eh we will not, we will not, we will cut short your statement during the executive session.
Yes, your honor.
Tsaka po, marami pa po eh. May mga complication ka kasi, dami dito. Ah for example, Inspector Glassy. Eto, si Glassy, Inspector Edgardo Mendoza, Chief Inspector Rocky, now assigned in Sablayan. Si Glassy nasa IBP ngayon, di ba? Tama?
Dabaw po.
Dabaw pa rin? Okay. Now, si Rocky is in Sablayan?
In Dabaw po.
In Dabaw pa rin, tama? And marami pa po, mga names, kasi we have already checked. Pero as again, as I've stated, I hope you will say it all during the executive session. Kasi again, let me stress, ikaw po, less corrupt ka doon sa loob ng ano po.
Thank you po.
Nakuha ko na po 'yung background mo, kaya lang, I do believe na na-pressure ka lang, kaya tell all na. Tell all na kasi wala na eh. And you will be retiring by November, di ba? Tama? Kasi baka magpatong-patong pangkaso mo because of this. Okay? So you commit na to this committee, okay ah?
Yes po.
Okay. That's all, Mr. Chairman, he has already committed and let's see what will happen during the executive session. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you Congressman Padwano. The next to interpolate is Congressman Benny Abante, you are recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, ah magandang tanghali po Superintendent Padilla. Marami lang na itanong sa inyo at ah ako'y nagpapasalamat sa inyong mga sagot. I hope that you're really honest enough today. Sapagkat sinabi nga po ni Congressman Akop na 'yung inyong unang affidavit na pinadala rito ay pawang kasinungalingan, no? At ngayong bagong affidavit ninyo ay talagang sinasabi ni po ninyo that you are now telling the truth and nothing but truth. Ni Uba?
Yes po.
Obanggit po ninyo rito ang pag-uusap po ninyo ng CIDG Officer Ruina Karma. Ah babanggitin ko uli, ang pinag-usapan ninyo, ang sabi sa inyo na Chief Karma and I quote, eh mga tao kami dyan nagagawa at huwag mo nang questionin. And whether you like it or not, we will operate and do not interfere, baka madamay pa pamilya mo. Alam mo na si Congressman, si Colonel Karma ay babae, di ba?
Yes po.
Ibig mong sabihin, nainiwala kayo na ang isang babae, pwedeng sabihin to sa inyo?
Hawak po nilang.
Alright, sinabi niyo, that you were, nagkaroon kayo ng intense pressure. 'Yung intense pressure, ibig sabihin, natakot kayo, sinabi niya. Kayo ba ay nagkaroon ng intense pressure sa kanyang sinabi? O sa isip ninyo, meron pang tao behind what Chief Karma said? At mas mataas po ito?
That's true.
You, you, hindi po kayo natakot doon sa sinabi ni Chief Karma eh? Kinabahan kayo sapagkat alam ninyo na meron mas malaking tao behind what Chief Karma said?
Yes po.
Kanina po, nabanggit ninyo, tinanong po kayo ng isang colleague namin dito about the former president. Pinanggit niyo, mayor pa siya, ano po, nung si Chief Karma ay naging commander ba sa Dabaw?
CIDG po.
Oh therefore, ang binabanggit ninyo, eto, 'yung pong behind the big person sa sinabi po ni Chief Karma ay inyong ini-implygate ang ating pangulo, ang ating former president, ganun po ba?
Hindi ko naman po inimplygate, pero hawak po sila ng mas mataas.
Okay, ibig sabihin yan, hawak po si Chief Karma ng mas mataas. At ang mas mataas dyan ay ang dating pangulo. Tama po ba ako?
Yes, your honor, Mr. Chair.
Okay, Mr. Chair, yun lamang po, sapagkat atin narinig na binanggit po ni Superintendent Padilla na mas merong mas mataas kaya siya natakot tungkol sa sinabi ni Chief Karma. Salamat po.
Thank you Congressman Abante. The last to interpolate ah is our senior deputy speaker Dong Gonzalez, you are recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good morning, ah Colonel Padilla.
Yes, your honor, Mr. Chair, good morning.
Medyo nanginginig pa po 'yung kabay niyo ngayon o hindi na? Hindi na po, no? Last August twenty-eight, medyo hindi ka masyadong kalmando. Ah may tanong lang po ako sa inyo. Naniniwala ka na ngayon, tinanong ko si Tata na tumawag si Colonel Karma sa inyo at sabi mo, hindi mo nakausap. So tinatanggap mo na ngayon na nag-usap kayo ni Colonel Karma?
Yes, your honor, Mr. Chair. In fact, ah hindi ko po sana ah nasagot nung previous kasi I am ah, ah worried of my.
Safety.
Safety.
Salamat, ah Colonel Padilla. Ngayon, ah Colonel Padilla, meron na po akong hawak dito na sinumpahang salaysay ni ah Ginong Leopoldo Tan na naging subject ng nakaraang imbestigasyon nung April twenty-eight, two thousand twenty-four sa page number. Comsec, pwede po pakiaabot lang kay ah Colonel Padilla po ito? Colonel Padilla, 'yung pong tatlo po 'yang nakabilog, gusto ko lang pong marinig ng, ng mga miyembro at mga nakikidig sa buong mundo. Pwede niyo pong basahin 'yung number twenty-eight?
Number twenty-eight?
Number twenty-eight po, sa salaysay ni Leopoldo Tan.
Habang naglalakad kami...
Paki-lapit po 'yung mikropo, no?
Habang naglalakad kami papuntang investigation section, tumunog ang cellphone ni Superintendent Padilla. Nakita ko na pinindot ni Superintendent Padilla ang kanyang cellphone. Nadinig ko na sinabi nung tumawag kay Superintendent Padilla, "Congrats Superintendent Padilla, job well done. Pero grabe 'yung ginawa mo, ginawang dinuguan."
Medyo mahina po 'yung mikropo, pakihulit lang po 'yung last sentence?
Pero grabe 'yung ginawa mo, ginawa mong dinuguan.
Oh...
Twenty-nine, alam ko na...
Sige po, number twenty-nine, pakibasa po 'yung number twenty-nine.
Alam ko na ang kausap ni Superintendent Padilla ay si Presidente Duterte dahil familiar ko ang boses niya.
Number thirty po, pakibasa 'yung number thirty.
Pagkatapos ng tawag, sabi ni Superintendent Padilla sa mga kasamahan niya doon, tumawag si presidente, nag-congratsa akin. Dahil sa sinabing ito ni Superintendent Padilla, kaya lalo akong napaniwala na ang tumawag sa kanya ay si President Duterte.
Colonel Padilla, ngayon, nandito ko po sa harap ng mga miyembro ng Kongreso. Nasa harap ka po ng mga kapwa nating Pilipino nanonood. Ang dami-daming nanonood sa atin at maraming nanonood all over the country, all over the world. May tanong po ako sa inyo. Naniniwala po ba kayo sa sinabi ni Leopoldo Tan sa number twenty-eight, twenty-nine, at thirty?
Mr. Chairman, ah, if I may?
Okay Congressman Fernandez.
With the indulgence of, ah, senior deputy speaker, no, ah... I think, um, we're dealing, ah, deeply, ano, ah, with this discussion. And, ah, I'm just, ah, worried about the safety of, ah, Superintendent, um, Padilla. Considering that he is a sixty-four-year-old, ah, retiring in a couple of months and at the same time, ah, his family lives in, ah, Dabaw City. Ah, he's asking for an executive session and he continually, continually, ah, insisting that he be given a chance on an executive session. Ah, we all know that the sensitivity of the issue that we are tackling right now and it entails the life of the people that love this guy. Although, Mr. Chairman, ah, we have seen some inaccuracy on the new affidavits that, ah, the new affidavit that he submitted to us, but nevertheless, we cannot counter, no, 'yung buhay na maaaring mawala sa mga testimonial ang ibibigay niya dito sa ating kapulungan. And I think it is incumbent upon all of us to, ah, to think about the family of Superintendent, um, Padilla. Last hearing, I, ah, hardly questioned the Superintendent, um, Padilla because I know that he was lying. And indeed, with the chains of affidavit that he subscribe right now, I think somehow he's telling the truth, but not completely. Because there is an apprehension on his part. And considering the safety of his children and his family, I think it is, um, just proper for us to, ah, finally, ah, finally, ipagkalao po natin sa kanya 'yung request niya doon po sa executive session. And, um, he divulge a lot of things. The name of, ah, Garma, the name of, ah, Edilberto Leonardo, nabanggit kanina, the former president as well. And, um, I think, Mr. Chairman, this is high time that, ah... Pagbigyan na po natin si, ah, Superintendent, ah, Padilla. And if I may, no, Mr. Chair, ah, kasi you, you, you are reading a lot of documents. Those documents that you are, you are reading right now pertains to what, ah, Superintendent Padilla?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Tungkol po saan 'yung mga dokumentong 'yan?
'Yung, ito po 'yung lagbok ng chief commander during the event.
Can you kindly submit that to us? Can, can we have that, ah, documents?
Ah, yes, Your Honor, Mr. Chair.
Okay, sige, thank you so much. And, and with that, ah, Mr. Chairman, ah, I move that, ah, we convene our, um, QuadCom into an executive session.
Uh, before the chair rules on that, uh, on that, uh, motion by Congressman Dan Fernandez, ah, allow the chair to recognize our deputy speaker, ah, Robbie Puno, you are recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a quick question, ah, to edify this representation, Mr. Chairman. Ah, in the issue of a, a, in the consideration of a request for a, an executive session, may I inquire what are the criteria for deciding whether we do or do not, ah, grant this request? Is it completely at the discretion of, or, and a, subject to a vote by the body? Or is there, do we consider personal safety? Do we consider national security? What or other factors? May, may I please, ah, ask the chair for clarification on that issue?
Well, ah, in reply to Congressman Robbie Puno, if the committee, this is section thirty-seven of our rules, no? It says that if the committee... On the sixth paragraph, section thirty-seven, regular and special meetings. If the committee or subcommittee deems that the subject matter of the discussion in a public hearing may endanger national security or may be offensive to decency or public morals, it shall conduct the meeting in an executive session. In our case, ah, the parliamentary status is that Congressman Dan Fernandez made a motion to convert this hearing into an executive session. Earlier, ah, there was a manifestation by Congressman Keith Flores and Congressman, ah, ah, Abante, objecting to the request that we grant executive session to, ah, Colonel Padilla. So, since there are objections, ah, and the motion is, ah, proper at the moment, then, ah, let us, ah, vote on the motion of, ah...
Mr. Chairman.
Congressman Dan Fernandez.
Mr. Chair, if I may, if I may, Mr. Chairman. Because prior to, ah, the, the motion that I, ah, manifested a while ago, ah, the objection of Congressman, ah, Keith Flores and the chairman, ah, Abante, ah, there was not, there were no proper motion that was, ah, moved by, ah, the two of them. They have manifested their objection on having a executive session in relation to the letter that was given to us by, ah, Superintendent Padilla. So, I think the proper objection must be done on the motion that I have, ah, manifested on this QuadCom, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, Mr. Chair.
Ah, okay Congressman Abante.
I think there was a motion made by Congressman Keith Flores. Now, I'd like to explain my objection, Mr. Chair, no?
Okay. Number one, there is a motion by Congressman Dan Fernandez to convert this hearing into an executive session. Ah, earlier, there was a manifestation made by Congressman Keith Flores as an objection to that request of Colonel Padilla and which was also, ah, ah, stated by Congressman Benny Abante, ah, objecting to the same, ah, request. Now, ah, since we want to decide this collectively as a body, we would like to give both the members of, ah, this committee who objected and state for the record the reason why they objected to, in the motion to grant executive session to Colonel Padilla. So, we would like to hear the objection first of Congressman Abante and then Congressman Keith Flores. Congressman Abante, you're recognized.
Yes, Mr. Chair, with due respect to my co-chair, Dan Fernandez, I objected because, number one, ah, Superintendent Padilla already made it public and he has answered many questions already as far as his, ah, affidavit is concerned. And number two, Mr. Chair, he has already actually implicated the former president by my questions, Mr. Chair, on the issue of the killing of the three Chinese drug lords. 'Yun lamang po ang gusto ko sabihin, Mr. Chair.
Thank you Congressman Abante, Congressman Flores, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, in light of the manifestation of Chairman Dan Fernandez, I will give, ah, Colonel Padilla a chance, Mr. Chair, to answer questions which he thinks, ah, should only be disclosed during an executive session.
Thank you Congressman Flores. So now, we will now rule on the motion of Congressman Dan Fernandez.
Mr. Chair, can I ask for a one-minute suspension, please?
On the question raised by Congressman Robbie Puno, ah, does the gentleman from Antipolo, ah, is satisfied with the reply of the chair?
Ah, just a further clarification, Mr. Chairman.
Please proceed.
The, the response that I hear from the chairman seems to suggest that the, the position taken by the Colonel, by Colonel Padilla has been that it is for his personal safety that he wants the, an executive session. And according to the rules that you have stated, Mr. Chairman, that's not one of the criteria for granting an executive session.
But, ah, among, among others, ah, the reason that Colonel Padilla cited is the safety, his personal safety and his family's safety. Now, we will grant him an executive session, listen to his revelation and we will decide whether indeed the session that we will have with him is, ah, ah, an executive session where we cannot disclose to the public what we discussed in this, ah, executive session. So it is still up to the committee, ah, to whether we will make public the disclosure or the revelation that will be made by Colonel Padilla in our executive session.
That's ver, that's clear, very clear, Mr. Chairman, thank you very much.
Thank you very much Congressman Puno.
Mr. Chair, may I ask for a one-minute suspension, please?
One-minute suspension. Hearing is assumed.
Mr. Chair.
Congressman, ah, SDS Dong Gonzalez first and then Congressman, ah, Benny Abante. SDS Gonzalez, you are recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For all those reasons, I will now give way, I will stop my line of questioning to Colonel Padilla to give way for the executive session.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Thank you Congressman Gonzalez, yes, Congressman Abante.
In respect to my good friend who will become the governor of Laguna, ah, I accede to the, ah, ah, to the request of the COM to give Superintendent Padilla an executive session. Thank you.
Okay, so... There is a motion to convert this hearing into an executive session. Julie seconded, are there any objections? Hearing none, the motion is carried. At this point, we'd like to ask everyone who are not members of the House of Representatives to please proceed outside. We will call you back after we, we finish the executive session, including the media. Okay? Please, ah...
Paki-turn off po 'yung camera, ah, please.
Bring your cameras outside and no, no other personnel in this room except the members of the House of Representatives and the secretariat. Okay, all pages, please make sure that the resource persons are out, please enjoy. There's lunch to be served outside, may lunch tayo, no, page? Okay, lunch have been served, okay, sa baba. So please, ah, we will call you back.